All right, I'd like to call the Town Act and Planning Board meeting to order on Thursday, January 6, 2022, at 6:04. Yeah, we'll do the pledge.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, uh, did everybody get a chance to look at their minutes?
Just got them.
Yeah, they're kind of a lot. Do you want to hold off on?
Well, I was going to suggest, given all sets of minutes are pretty extensive, that, and now that we have them, we could read them in the off time. So I'd like to suggest we consider not dealing with the approval of the minutes till the next meeting, and then people can read them on their own time, if that makes sense.
Yeah.
I'll take a motion, we table the minutes from December 2nd and December 16th until the next meeting.
Second.
All in favor? All right, we're going to move on to the moratorium review. Did everyone get a chance to read the final proposed? Any comments on it or concerns?
Is this the attorney's?
There's two of them in there. There's one that was the rough draft.
This is the rough draft that the attorney then.
Right. So there was the, right, so that you have the rough draft, and then you have the proposed finalized one.
Yep.
I'd like you guys to review both of them, or review the finalized. If that's where you guys, if that's what you're looking to do, um, I had.
Any questions, comments, concerns?
I read your email. Is there anything that you can go over? I can't bring it up off the top of my head what your concerns were with the changes.
I think generally speaking, that I had concerns that the basis stated for the moratorium might be overly broad, um, in that they didn't necessarily implicate health and safety of residents. However, um, I didn't have the statute in front of me at the time, and I now see that the standard is whether certain circumstances could pose serious threats to the health, safety, and welfare of the residents of Acton. And so, for example, my concern about citing increased maintenance expenses, I didn't see how that would rise to a level of concern about health and safety, but it does rise to a level of concern about welfare, certainly. Um, so I think that the concerns that I raised in my email, um, to the code enforcement officer to please, uh, consider reviewing with, uh, council for the town, I don't have those concerns any longer. Um, and also, probably, and more importantly, um, my simply asking Mr. Sevigny to do that and knowing that he did, um, suffices for me because the person making that decision really should be the town's attorney and the person that drafted this, in my opinion. And, you know, while I am an attorney, um, I'm not the town's attorney, and it's really important to me not to blur that line, so I would defer to, uh, the town's attorney.
Would you like to hear the response with the town attorney said? I can, I can tell you, I can generalize it, pretty much, but, um.
You want it?
Yeah, so I mean, generally, it just pretty much states that, um, Bernard's concerns very much mirror my own. This goes back to where he said that he feels that, um, moratorium might not be needed, and it can be done within conditional uses. And that's how it, he really goes on about it. Okay, so in our earlier discussions with the idea of a moratorium was first raised, I was, I was of the opinion that most, if not all, of the concerns that I was hearing related to the matters, which the board already had the wherthal to deal with based on its authority under Sections 5.9.2 and 6.6.3 of the zoning ordinance to impose conditions on the pit applicant or to deny the conditional use application altogether if the board determined that the imposition of conditions was insufficient to address the perceived threat to public, public health, safety, or welfare. This is the reason I, that I requested that you urge the board to specifically list the areas of concern, um, that, that it concerns that it wished to address during the moratorium period. Goes on, so, "My proposed edits were largely intended to, to remove strenuous language and set forth more clearly the areas of concern contained in the board's original draft. Obviously, um, as Bernard has pointed out, the results of this document, which paints with a very broad brush unless and until the board is prepared to state its concerns with more specificity."
Specificity.
Specificity. Thank you. I'm not sure that we can determine whether or not the moratorium is the best approach. You know, so he just stated, like I had stated last meeting, that he felt that, um, moratorium might not be needed. It's up to you guys what you guys want to do, and it can be, and he felt that a lot of what we were trying to address can be done with conditional use, with the, just the reviewing the conditional uses. So that's, was his response to Bernard's questions.
And it's, so. When was that, was that sent after our last meeting?
Yeah, that was sent, you gave me these questions on, I just received that this morning.
Okay.
Um, so I sent this to him yesterday, because you sent me the questions yesterday, these concerns, or the day before, yesterday or the day before, and so.
Those, right, as to his verbiage, those were those, the questions I sent were to some of what was cited, what he added or changed, not to the necessity of the moratorium. That's what's confusing me.
Right, he's just, he's just stating the fact that he just doesn't, the necessity is kind of where he's, he's standing behind that.
Okay.
Necessity of it is.
Well, I guess I'm surprised we're talking about necessity at this point, but.
We should, we really shouldn't be, because you guys have already voted that you guys want the moratorium.
Yes.
So we need to be moving forward with that now.
Right, but I do want to say a couple things quickly on that, if I may.
Yeah, sure.
And those are that, um, I was surprised at the last meeting, Gavin, that that was your perspective, and certainly as someone who has a lot more experience at this than I do and some other people on the board, um, I'd be interested to hear more about why that is your perspective. And in part because I don't, I don't see how additional, um, extraction pits could be approved without increasing traffic, for example, of large vehicle, one of the big ones. We can't put a condition, I don't see, foresee, that would do that. And now, hearing what the town's attorney has said, I don't really, as a board member, if those concerns exist, and the only way really to stop it is for us to be denying permits to have the moratorium, I would still, I would really rather have the voters decide that than us saying, oh, well, we're just not going to approve anymore because these concerns exist. So, I mean, I'm still open to being persuaded that there is a way to address these concerns without a moratorium, but I just don't see it. So, do you still see that there are ways?
Well, I guess one thing we could do would be read through the, uh, performance standards existing in the ordinance for mineral extraction, not the conditional use form, but the actual performance standards, um, because that does address a lot of the, a lot of the issues. The, the issue of heavy traffic, of course, is, is an outstanding issue. I don't, I don't object to that in any way, but, I mean, that does seem to be the number one concern, um, which I, I feel like striping H Road, putting a yellow line on there would, would do a lot to help with that. It certainly wouldn't decrease the number of trucks, but I'm also just not sure we would be able to come up with a way to decrease the traffic within the period of the moratorium.
But. Well, we may not be able to decrease, but we may be able to look at other remedies like widening the road, striping, and so forth.
Yeah.
But yeah, I just don't see a way other than something happening like widening roads, whatever. I don't see a way to negate or mitigate that concern without stopping expansion for now. So that was predominantly why I thought and still think the moratorium is important and the way to go. But again, I'm always open to being persuaded otherwise. But if the ish, if the bottom line is that the only way to address the concern in the immediate future is to stop, do not issue new permits, not have new pits, not have expansion, if it's to stop that, again, I think I would rather have the voters decide that than the planning board decide to do that. Do you understand what I mean?
Kind of, yeah. I'm following you.
Is that scaring you that you do follow?
Yeah, no, I'm following you. I'm just.
I mean, it seems like council for the town is saying, yes, I understand the concerns, but there is a way to address the concerns by not, you know, not issuing the conditional permits or putting restrictions. I don't see restrictions we can place that would not increase traffic, other than you can't open a new pit or you can't expand. I don't see a way to do it. And so if the bottom line is that, you know, it needs to, we can't expand, we can't add new pits without that safety concern, I don't want the, the mechanism to, to do that resting on the board. I think that's up to the voters to say, we want a moratorium on this until we can find some remedy. So now that I've said that and, and heard what you have to say, I'm more comfortable in saying, yeah, I still think we need a moratorium.
Is this, is this proposed to go to the voters, this?
Yes.
It's not, yeah. It's still, it's still proposed that we have a town vote on, correct?
So that, yes, that was, that was, I sent, um, our council, um, draft that Bernard and I, Bernard drew up, I just helped, uh, was there for moral support.
Did you see that?
Um, and so I sent that one, and then he came back with me, he struck out some stuff and added some different verbiage, and this is what came back from the, the land use attorney.
Yep.
Our land use attorney. So that was kind of what, I'm having you guys review that, um, first. So if this is what you guys want on there, um, and you're okay with that, then this is what the voters will see. They also feel that, um, I guess sometimes the shorter, the sweeter, the shorter the better, you know, you don't need to draw it all out, just.
Pin forty.
Yeah, I agree. There's nothing we can do to mitigate the traffic. I think there are some other things that I, in particular, have learned over the last couple of weeks that we could do in some of the other areas in terms of studies and, you know, more factual, um, information about some of those things we check off. I think there is a, a, there are things we can do there, but certainly it's not going to limit the traffic. And so I, I agree with Bernie. I, I think it needs to be, uh, decided by the voters, and then we proceed. One question I had was, do you, do we believe water bodies includes the aquifer?
One of the things, particularly in, uh, that area is the aquifer's there, right? It's the aquifer district, and, you know, we talk a lot about the ponds, but, um, I'm particularly concerned about the aquifer itself. And so if we think that's included in the generic water bodies, then.
I can add, uh, aqua fort, uh, district or the aqua. Aqua, aqua for protection, however you guys want to word it. Uh, I have, yeah, I mean, that's why we're here. If you want something to add, want something changed, let's, let's change it, and then I'll, I'll make the quick change. And then you guys can throw it on it or, or table it till next meeting, but this is, if you guys are looking to do the moratorium, it is time sensitive.
Right. Yep, I was going to say, I think if we have. Go ahead, no, he had a second.
I just want to, um, in the definitions, water body, page thirty-four, any great pond, river, or stream. So according to the ordinance, the aquifer is not a water body. Of course, I mean, it, it is a body of water that feeds the lakes, you know, but in, according to the ordinance and the language in the ordinance, that's the definition.
So add aqua fort?
Could you add something like, both above and below ground? Would that cover it?
I think when we consider what all is included as reasons cited, we just need to make sure we have sufficient reasons that it would hold up if it was challenged. We don't have to list every single concern, which is not to diminish what you're raising. And the only reason I'm saying I don't think we need to change is the matter, the issue of expediency. If, if it's sufficient tonight and we approve it, it can move on. If we want to make changes to it, then it's going to wait another two weeks for it to come back before us again. And I'm of the opinion that it's sufficient, we've given enough reasons. And, you know, it says, the reasons are cited, including but not limited to, so that acknowledges there may be other reasons too.
I, um, a simple way to fix that would be under number two. It says impact of additional and/or expanded mineral extraction pits in areas approximately to water bodies on.
Water quality.
You could say groundwater quality.
Above, below ground.
Yeah, there you go, yeah.
Covers both. Water bodies underground are considered. I mean, if you wanted to make it, cover it all, above and below ground.
But then, so do you want to wait for those changes to be made and have it come back in two weeks, or do you want to?
Could we not approve it with that change?
I suppose you can make a motion to approve it with that. Yep.
Yeah, because they're, they're waiting for your approval at this point right now.
But you also brought up a good point, said but not limited to, so I think you've covered. Because in addition to that, a specific water body we were talking about is aquifers as well, but without.
I'm happy to leave it out. I just think it needs to be stated in this particular industry. I don't think there's been enough focus on it. But I'm happy to withdraw, uh, the concern, given, as Bernie points out, not limited to, and I make a motion to approve this.
I can make the changes now, and we can vote on it at the end of the meeting.
I'm happy to make a motion to approve this proposed moratorium ordinance on, uh, mineral, mineral extraction pits as written in this final proposed draft.
Second, anyone?
Second.
All in favor? All opposed? Four to one. That's it.
So Jason, do you now have what you need from us in order to?
Yes.
Approach the planning board and move it.
Uh, yes, so.
Excuse me?
Yes, we have, uh, we have, we need, um, they will, um, make the correct phone calls and set, whatever they need to do, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. All right, on to, uh, roundtable discussion, zoning ordinance definitions, proposed changes with North Star Planning. We have Keith, I forgot your last name.
McBride.
McBride, thank you, with us from North Star.
Well, thank you, there's three different ones, I don't know where you'd like to start, I've got a few. Or Jason, or whoever, make the call on which one.
I'm sorry, I was trying to find it. What were you saying?
There's three different ones here, there's the solar, there's the, the contract yards, and there's mixed use, just, you know, your, your choice, you can be a jukebox, which song would you like?
Go for it.
To go for first.
Do you, do you have a document for the solar? I only have two.
I only have the mixed, uh, building use one.
Okay.
Contracted use, mixed use.
Okay, well, then we can definitely start with those two.
Well, do you, do you have one that Jason could print out for us?
Yeah, I have them downstairs. I thought I printed out every, copies for all you guys last week.
I may, I maybe just didn't get one.
I didn't get, I didn't get.
Right, I'll be right back, I do have them printed up, I guess I didn't have them.
Well, we can start anyway.
Yeah.
Yep, um, we'll start with mixed use then. First adding the definition of mixed use and what that means as, as a use, and, um, which is pretty simple, and, um, basically just talks about it being a combination of residential and other allowed uses within the district, either in the same building or on the same site. So mixed use could be defined as two allowed uses in the district in one building, or allowed uses in the district on multiple buildings on the same site. The real question is, in what districts do you want to allow mixed use? So we're not changing any of the underlying uses that are allowed in any of the districts. If, you know, industrial uses are not allowed in the district, you can't have an industrial use just because it's in a mixed use building or on a mixed use site. So that's not the change that's taking place, it's just simply we'll allow multiple uses to exist in the same building or on the same site, as long as the uses that are there are already allowed in the underlying district. That's a question that comes up a lot when you start kind of mixing all of these definitions and what's allowed and what isn't. So that's an important distinction to make right off the bat. So the question then, you know, getting that out of the way, the real question is in what districts in town is mixed use appropriate? So in the document that you have and the proposed changes, there is a revised format of your land use table from the land use ordinance, and, um, taking a look at some of the allowed uses that are in, um, some of the districts that exist in town, uh, we took a shot at it and saying permitted in, you know, in village area, permitted in commercial, conditional in some of the other districts. This is a first draft at it, this is, uh, your all first look at it, so this is absolutely up for discussion, and this was our just taking a blind stab. So, um, really, those are, as it relates to mixed use, these are the only two changes that are on the table. Number one, a definition of what mixed use means, and number two, um, allowing mixed use in districts in town. Which ones should those, should those be permitted, which ones they be, uh, conditional or not permitted at all? And those are the things I think that, um, I really feel more comfortable leaving it to a planning board and the community to say, this is where we feel like this is appropriate, and this is where we feel like it's not, and this is where we feel like it could be conditional. So that's, that's a simple one to, to start off with, as, as it relates to mixed use, and I'm glad to address any questions or give any more direction that I can to guide that discussion, but, um, that's the, uh, that's the real, the nuts and bolts of it as it relates to mixed use.
What is recreation in compact urban form?
That can be, I've actually seen that more defined, recreation meaning, you know, outdoor recreation versus indoor recreation, um, but I think in this case it's probably just referring to, think of a playground. And again, that language can be, can be tweaked if, you know, if that doesn't seem to make sense, or if there's something already existing in the ordinance that, you know, conflicts, or that, you know, if you already have a definition or an understanding of recreation, that doesn't seem to jive with that language, we can strike it or we can revise it.
Do you want to take that bottom part over?
I just, I, I find it, um, the language just a little difficult for our rural town. I don't want, I don't want anybody's hackles raised because we say.
Well, I will say, just looking really quickly through your, your ordinance, there is a definition in the ordinance for recreational facility, a place designed and equipped for the conduct of sports, leisure time activities, and other customary and usual recreational activities, excluding boat launching facilities. It could be revised just to say recreational facilities that might, again, you want, you want it to jive with the ordinance the way it already exists, and you guys have a lot more knowledge on what, what's already in the ordinance than, than we do, so.
My opinion is we'd want to do that.
Get rid of the urban form.
Yeah, I think just use the recreational facility, whatever the term it is we define, we already have defined in the ordinance. And then I'm just, I, uh, we've certainly made it as we asked for, um, And then I'm just, I, we've certainly made it as we asked for potential in, you know, several of the zones that we currently have. When this came up for us, we were specifically talking about commercial, the commercial zones. And so, I'd be interested in people's take on saying it was conditional use approval in something like the resource protection of the shoreline zone. I'm not sure if that's an expansion of, of the initial concern we, we listed, or we discussed.
What were you saying? Didn't this come about because of the, right? So it was more for the commercial?
Right. At least in my mind, I mean, I certainly could be persuaded if people thought it was a good change for, you know, critical rural or shoreline. Maybe just not getting what, I, I, again, I don't know if that's what our intent was.
I think the intent was, because the old commercial zones were based where they were, and then we had that one fellow come in. So we're trying to make it them losing money, or anyone else losing money in that zone, they can do whatever to get, you know, is it right?
Would it be appropriate to put up the zoning map? Because I think originally when we brought this up, I'm more of a visual person anyway, and we were talking about where that use would be more than the chart. Am I missing something? The intent of what we were trying to do originally.
Right, which to me was, was more narrow in scope than what we're doing here.
Right, we were looking at the map.
Right, and the commercial zones, which precluded some sensible things from us being able to approve some sensible things.
Right. Because I, personally, I'm more confused by the chart, adding this to the chart.
Oh, you're saying go about it different way, define, change the definitions of the zones.
Well, I find some confusion in the, in that we have a, a zone called the mixed use district. And now, which, and it says this district is designed to observe the existing New England village character to include a mixture of commercial and residential uses. So that this definition here of mixed use district doesn't indicate it would be necessarily on the same lot, it would just be lots next to each other could have different uses. And that, that district is down on French Street. It's on your little map, it's this blue one. And so I, there was a little bit of confusion between, between laying this mixed use over the, I think it's in the terminology, is that we were using the same terminology for a zone and for something that lays over all the zones. So. But at the same time, we were talking about the commercial districts, and maybe we were thinking of just changing the commercial district we have to mixed districts like we have on this chart here, the one by French Street. And then, and then what you can do within the mixed use zone could be governed by this definition. Or we could, or we could create a new one, but that's my biggest confusion, is that we've got the, the same term being used for two similar things.
Well, I think you have a district, I understand what you're saying, I think you have a district called the mixed use district.
Yeah.
And then, just like you have a commercial district, and then you have a use called mixed use that can be done in any districts in which it's appropriate, there's been talk about it being appropriate in, in commercial districts in town. And it is a little bit, I mean, I've, I've seen, there are other communities I know of that have a mixed use district in town, but usually they will have a, a definition of what mixed use means and how they picture that. Some towns have not allowed, for example, mixed use to include two different buildings on one property, or have had to revise their zoning ordinance so that it includes two different buildings on the same property, instead of a village character mixed use, which typically is picturing, you know, a main street with, you know, first floor retail and some residential or office space on, on the upper floors, in like a, a main street or a downtown. So there's, when you say mixed use, people do get different pictures of, of different things. So that definition that says we're talking about this, that it can be two buildings on the same site, or it can be that one building that has a mix of uses in it, or, you know, the upstairs being residential or office. So I, the difference between the name of a district and the use, I, I don't want that to cause confusion. But I would say, there's, there wouldn't be anything wrong with having a mixed use district that's defined the way it is, that, you know, is designed to promote a, a combination of uses within close proximity to each other in this district in a classic New England sort of character way, and also have a defined use in your ordinance that says mixed use, which is going to be permitted or conditional in a variety of districts beyond just the one called mixed use. Does that make sense?
Yes.
I feel like it's getting a little bit twisted around.
It does, but we do have to thresh it out, yeah. Yeah. So. I, I think the board probably needs to chew on it for a little while and, and kind of figure out if we like this definition of mixed use, and if we like the way it's laid onto the land use chart.
Yep, and I'm glad to, I mean, I know this is the first chance to look at it for everybody, I'm glad to take another stab at it. I mean, we've, we've been working with Jason on, you know, some of these issues and talking them through, and with some guidance from you folks on what you think you'd like to see in that definition, you know, the recreational facility piece is a good suggestion. Glad to take another, another shot at it and bring back a different definition, or to change, you know, if resource protection, shoreline zone, and aquifer protection district is, well, that one's already conditional, but, you know, some of these conditionals could turn into ends for not permitted. I know what's the first, I guess all I'm saying is I know it's the first time taking a look at this, glad to take your guidance and take, take, take two on it. That would be great, actually, to get, to get feedback like that, appreciate it.
Yeah, your suggestion of not permitting it in resource protection shoreline and Little Osiphe, I think is a sensible one.
What about the aquifer protection?
Well, the, the aquifer protection overlays all the other districts, so some of the aquifer protection is in the transition, some's in the rural, some's in the critical rural. So you, resultantly, you, it would have to be somewhat, it could be conditional use, I guess, but it would have to be permitted because it overly, it overlays these other districts where we would be permitting it. Sometimes we just put NA there because it's not really the same as the other zones. But I certainly wouldn't exclude it in the aquifer protection district, even if I may want to, because I don't think it would be sensible. You know, and there, there should be some conversation, do we want the whole transition area and the whole, the whole village would just be permitted in the yellow, so do we want it just, or do we, do we have a different vision for the center of town, and then the orange, the transition, it would be, is right now conditional use, which I think is fairly sensible, because that's kind of the area that we want to focus development in. But we don't need to be so specific as saying it's just residential development in the transition area. So I think, I think, I like some of what's on the chart, and I would change some of what's on the chart. Do, you know, we can just walk through the, the zones quickly and see if we can figure any of them out, and then if not, we can keep moving, I guess. Would, would, you know, do, do we envision that the, the village area would, would be a, a mixed use area? And it says, what does it say about the, you know, we can read what it says about the village area. Village District, this district is designed to allow mixed uses, greater density and unlimited growth. So it says mixed uses right there in the, the zoning definition for village, so I would say. That we would permit, permit mixed uses, and that some of them, some of the uses would be conditional uses and some of them wouldn't, and that it would, that depending on what the project was.
Right, again, you're not, you're not taking something that's conditionally, an underlying use that's conditional, and suddenly magically making it no longer conditional just because it's part of a mixed use project.
Right.
So.
So that seems, yeah, so that seems to line, Village District being permitted in the Village District seems to line up, I don't know what.
Yeah.
I mean, this is just the first run, we don't, you know, it's not like we have to finalize it tonight. The transition area. I mean, it would be good to review some of these projects, but once again, not all of them would have to be reviewed.
Well, I think, I think part of the exercise, this is a good exercise to go through each one, I think part of the exercise, too, would be to, you know, look at the allowed uses that currently exist in those districts, and saying, all right, could we see some of these existing in the same building in that district, on the same site in that district? Because I, you know, I don't want to get in a situation where everybody's picturing that downtown, you know, retail or, you know, restaurant or something on the first floor, and apartments upstairs, and then plunking that into all these different districts, that's not, if that's not something that would happen in that district under your zoning ordinance today, it's not going to happen because of this. So, you know, when you look at the transitional area and the uses that are allowed in it, think of those uses and say, are those multiple, are those, do they make sense, do we want to see multiple of those uses on the same site or in the same building within that district?
That's also something we should discuss as a board, too, is if, if we really envision these mixed uses as being on the same lot, or if we're thinking of mixed uses as being, you've got a store next to a residence, next to a garage, you know, and they're all separate lots, because there is a difference there, once we get into mixed use all in the same lot, it's like, we're talking more like a planned unit development kind of, kind of feel to it. So of course, that's something we have to think about. And then we have the rural area and the critical rural area. It seems like it's more sensible to have it in the rural area than, than widespread in the critical rural area, just due to the nature of the town, that, because the rural area has the two acre lot, so it'd be, and the critical rural has the five acre, so you'd be able to cram a lot more uses onto a five acre lot than a two acre lot, so we would want to consider that, that the lots have more space in the critical rural zone if we're, if we're allowing multiple uses on one lot. So I would definitely think that we would want to at least, that it would be at least a conditional use, it wouldn't just be a permitted. Then we've got the three commercial zones, which is kind of the area we were originally thinking of and focusing on, so we just, right now, our commercial zones don't allow residential development, which is something we were kind of struggling with. The reason that they don't is that we didn't want residential development to flood out the whole area where we wanted the commercial development. So I think that having mixed use in the commercial zones would, would be sensible.
Yeah, I agree, that was the initial impetus behind, behind doing this.
Yeah.
And I think we have history on the commercial zones, from when that, the design and the reason for the design was made, it hasn't borne out, to any great extent, anyway.
Right, where we placed the commercial zones hasn't really.
Commercialized.
Attracted the commercial businesses. I think it would obviously make sense to have mixed uses in the mixed use district, and then. Resource protection shoreline, Little Osiphe, I would be leaning toward certainly not having mixed use on the same lot in those areas, because, like, the shoreline's just so full.
We don't.
We don't, I personally don't, and the same thing with the Little Osiphe, we don't really want to encourage.
I would lean towards no for those three.
Not permitted.
Yeah. And that the resource protection is actually the most stringent in a way, because we don't, we're not even allowing them to put a single family dwelling in this buffer, because it's pretty much in a swamp, anyway, but, so I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't think it would work for that one. And then the, the aquifer protection district, I would lean toward just either saying it was permitted, or saying it was not applicable, applicable, so. That's that one.
I'll wait a few, before we move on, if anybody else wants to say anything about mixed use.
Well, I guess what I would say about mixed use is, and a general approach to this, I'd really rather that we schedule a workshop or a special meeting with a block of several hours for discussions as a board, because, again, I, I just really feel this is premature to, like Gavin, you just went through your perspective on each of those, I don't know enough whether to agree, disagree, or, because I need to see where these areas are.
Yeah.
And have that discussion, so am I ready to move on? No, I'm just ready to start to dig into that.
Right.
And so I can't give this gentleman one ounce of insight tonight, nor do I really want to have him come back at the next meeting with another draft, because I'm not ready. So I really would prefer that we have a workshop or a block of time to work on things, because otherwise, we, we come in and stuff is put in front of us that we haven't had time to read, think about, we've got people waiting on other issues, and if every meeting is a surprise of something else to look at, we're, again, we're back to we're spinning our wheels. So that's my suggestion, again.
I will say, that's really valid feedback, and I appreciate it. A lot of times, you know, things like this are presented as conversations. A lot of times, you know, things like this are presented as conversation starters and it doesn't necessarily mean that because you have this in front of you, you have to be ready to adopt something. So if the conversation gets to the point where you say, well, wait a minute, where the conversation is going is we need to have a broader conversation, that's really good, that's really good to know. And it's a good thing for, you know, community to be thinking about, you know, from the top, you know, at the board level is to say, wait, we got to go back down.
I'm sorry, I'm not laughing at you.
No. That, that's the process.
Not that I'm necessarily the authority, but that's what I said. That's my renewed suggestion. We're not getting anything done because we keep, the conversation keeps getting interrupted and so it doesn't flow. It's not a process. I can't tell you what I, what would be helpful or what we need because we don't even have the baseline yet, is my opinion. And I don't know how it happens, Mr. Chairman, that we keep getting, you know, guest speakers or presentations when we're not, we're not prepared for it. We don't know what's happening. So, I don't know. If it's helpful for everyone else, great, but I'm not finding this helpful or facilitating the process moving forward.
Jason, can I answer?
The fact that we don't know about, you don't know about what's in front of you or the fact that you don't know about conditional use permits, where, where are we going with this one? We have stuff that we had to, to square up and finish off that came, came about, which we haven't done because we were calling the meetings short at eight o'clock. So we're still dealing with conditional use applications.
Yeah, I'm not talking about that.
Well, I get that, but you, I did give you that paperwork to look at last week. I just didn't give you this one piece of the thing. We didn't get to look at it because we stopped anyway.
And we can, we can go beyond eight o'clock.
Most definitely can.
Right.
And we did hold a meeting last week, a special meeting last week, which that was to deal with the moratorium that was thrown at us. Well, not thrown at us, but what we're trying, you know, what we're trying to get, push it along, let's put it that way. So, I mean, everything is piling up and we're trying to get out of that pile right now.
Right. Well, I think, you know, in terms of trying to find a mutual interest and common goal, because I'm not, I don't want to create conflict, I want to create a solution.
Yeah.
To me, this, a solution might be to schedule like a four-hour block of time that we're going to work on proposed ordinance changes only. As a board, no visitors, nothing, just that's, that's the agenda and that's it. And see what we can get moving. I think Pat wanted to say something.
No.
Sorry.
Jason.
So you guys are more than welcome to schedule, you know, you can have a meeting next week. We have a conditional use application that we have to finish or work on tonight after, after we're done with this. You guys are more than welcome to have a meeting next week. We have a sit walk on Saturday. We, they're in no rush to, they don't need to come in and, and...
Right.
They don't need to do it right away. We can put, we can talk to them and ask them if they would like to just postpone it for a little bit after we do the sit walk, or you can review their conditions. That's up, that's, the planning board makes, you can make that decision. I don't have to make that decision for you. If you guys don't want to see, see anything else other than the ordinance, then so be it. That's kind of what I'm trying to do right now, trying to deal with the conditional uses of McCoy. And once that was done, we're not taking anything else on so that we can solely just work on the ordinances.
We did have that discussion, Jason and I, this week about just, you know, working on these at some point, not having, taking everything.
I have an application, I have applications on my desk looking to do conditional use applications, and I've told them that we are not, the planning board is not taking on any applications for the rest, the remainder of January. We're working strictly on ordinance for the review of, so that we can have this, all this done for the beginning of February.
What, Gavin?
I was just going to say, I think that the, the mixed use is, is more complicated than...
The contractor yard.
Than the next two, and that reviewing the next two should be, it's, it's kind of a more straightforward use that we're more familiar with. I think it would be worth just going through Contractor Yards and the SOLO tonight since we have this gentleman here with us. And I am totally, totally in favor of having a, either scrapping, scrapping mixed use on this coming town meeting or holding special meetings so that we can get to it. But I, I do also feel like we are gaining projects rather than moving through them, which is just how it is. It's okay. I feel like the, the mixed use is, it's a little bit confusing and we're not sure that's... We, we didn't really have much conversation previous to this about the mixed use. So that, I think that, like a contractor yard, I'm, I think we can move through these other two fairly rapidly tonight.
I haven't even read the SOLO one. Just got it.
Yeah, I just got the SOLO one.
That's going to take a while.
Sure, but I, I say we get a little presentation on the thought behind it and just so that...
Oh, we can...
And then, you know, spend just a short amount of time on each of those and then be on to old business.
Well, my opinion is, I think we do need to set up, set aside time to focus on these. I mean, none of these are new. I mean, they've been on our plate since middle of last year. And, you know, we, we just, we're not getting there. I, I'm very sympathetic to what Bernie's saying. So I'd be in favor of setting aside a meeting or some time to go through them in detail. I'm okay with talking about the Contractor Yard. I think that one is, if you want to hear what Keith has to say about SOLO, we can do that too. But I think we should set aside some time.
Are others willing and able to do an additional meeting or something to do that? I, I'm willing to do that. I mean, because I think it is important that we continue as best we can to do the other work, you know, to not put the public's work on hold because we're doing this, you know, to say, okay, well, let's come in, whatever, on an evening, aside from our regular meeting or, you know, and, and work on just this.
I mean, a good example is the rentals. I mean, we've been talking about the rentals for a year and a half. And we've had some good input and lots of input, and I don't feel like we've moved the needle at all.
No, I think, you know, we did ask Keith to do this work for us. I think we do own the time to go, just go through it. I mean, we can put the SOLO one away and then, you know, I'm all for another meeting as well.
Well, it would be good to get an overview on SOLO.
And then we, we do have changes from our next meeting per se. We can bounce it off Keith as well.
Right.
No, I, you know, I agree. Keith is here and we should make use of the time. And maybe schedule a separate meeting for the, just the board. I mean, obviously the public can be here, but for that to be the only agenda item is for us to work on these ordinance proposals. I'm satisfied with that. And then maybe before we bring in, you know, to ask us, are you ready to take on, is, is it time now to bring in North Star again, rather than it being, us not being prepared because we didn't know? Okay, thanks. Well, let's make use of the time we have.
Sure. Like I said, glad to, you know, give overviews, a great opportunity to kind of just get the conversation started. So Contractor Yards, I guess that one seems to be the one that everybody's most prepared to deal with. And the, the idea here was to, again, put a definition of it similar to what we did with mixed use and...
Keith, can I hold you on for a second?
Sure, go ahead.
I don't mean to stop, but Gavin, you had a conversation with Jen. Can you elaborate on what you guys were talking about with the, what was it? She's just trying, she's trying to leave, so...
We've got to get a little attention on the moratorium before the selectmen can take them. We missed a little piece of conversation, so if we can go back there real quick and verify, we apologize. So the moratorium based on your ordinance does not require a public hearing. There's not amendments to the zoning ordinance, so it actually doesn't require one. However, and it's an open town meeting, which means that they're voting on by a show of hands unless someone's vote, votes separately. Moratoriums and ordinances cannot be changed on town meeting floor. So it would be up to the planning board to decide if you were interested in having a public hearing at all on it, because when we get to town meeting, if there's input from the voters, they cannot make changes on moratoriums or ordinances on the floors. And the only place they would do that is at a public hearing. And of course, that, and it is not required, so we're not worried about, you know, asking votes over so many days or notifying the butters. It's, it's a common courtesy, it's your choice. My selectmen can't make that decision because you guys have already voted on a document. So you guys didn't be the one to decide if you want to have a public hearing on. Again, it's not required. There can be conversation at the town meeting, but even if someone came up with a great idea at town meeting, they can't make amendments to it. So I'm just looking for that final piece from you before I run with a date and set in a town meeting.
I'd like to make a motion that we have a public hearing.
I, you know, my only concern is the timing to get it moving, but I also feel like the spirit of the conversation, when we had several people here who owned mineral extraction pits, was that we would include them, we would listen to them, we would work together. And so that makes me inclined to have the public meeting, public hearings so that they can be heard on that. So I would be, you know, honoring that commitment to me is more important than getting this done ASAP.
Is that a second?
So I will second the motion.
All in favor of a public hearing on the moratorium?
Is there a timing issue with it? Do we have to give them 10 days' notice or two weeks' notice?
Well, and because it's not required, you know, we have flexibility with that. However, it is, if, if there's any changes, you know, if you've taken this public, if you've taken a public hearing and you hear the input and there's any changes to the moratorium, I mean, essentially you guys have already voted on a document. I mean, we didn't have to come back in and, and ask you, but I didn't want it to be missed and someone mentioned at the selectmen's meeting last night, so I wanted to make sure that you were considering it. I mean, it's, you know, 10 days is, is, you know, I wouldn't go much shorter than that just because it's going to be difficult to notify people, but you're going to need to be prepared, especially with the timing issue, to after the public hearing, either say, okay, we've heard it, we're not going to make any changes, or we've heard it, we're going to make that change and do it all at the same evening.
Well, can the public hearing be scheduled in conjunction with a planning board meeting?
Absolutely.
So then we could immediately take action if there was any action to take?
We just, you know, we're trying to set up a timeline to, we've got to get Warren Finance, we've got to get Warren Finance's document, because they have to make a recommendation on it. We've got to schedule a special town meeting, so...
And does the select board, in order for them to move it forward, the issue of a moratorium, do they have to make, do they have to vote on that specific moratorium language or just the issue?
Yes. No, it's going to be, there's going to be an actual, you know, it'll be Article 1, the select moderator, Article 2, you know, are you in favor of enacting the following moratorium? And it's got to be printed, it'll be printed on the actual warrant that's posted with the recommendations underneath it.
No, no, I mean, for the select board to decide that there will be a moratorium?
Well, they've already agreed to have a special town meeting.
Okay.
To put, and put the moratorium on, but we have to, their recommendation and Warren Finance's recommendation has to be on that warrant, so I can't craft that until you guys give me a final document.
So we're talking about waiting for like 10 days versus this happening this week? Getting the, getting it before Warren Finance, getting it?
Right. The idea, if you voted on it tonight and depending on what you did with the public hearing, was that we would turn it over to the Warren and Finance right away, but if there's a possibility that you're going to allow changes and that's the purpose of a public hearing, then we don't want to release that document to them.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Do you have a, can I just look at your calendar on there?
10 days from now would be a Sunday, the 16th.
Yeah, it doesn't have to be, literally, I suppose. You have to give at least 10 days, but...
Well, I mean, the, the town, the selectmen have a policy that they require 10 days' notice. Seven is ideal, 10 is to give administration and cable a chance to post it. I mean, if we, you know, took a little extra steps on the, on posting and put it in a few extra places, I mean, we could have a public hearing next week. It's not required, so we have no statutory requirements, I'll make that clear. You know, the 10 days, the 30 days, the, you know, notifying butters and all that, we don't have to do any of that. So do you have a meeting scheduled next week anyways?
Looks like we're going to.
We're on our way on to having another meeting if it's next week for our ordinances, but...
I mean, if you, you know, if you wanted to have a, it's more of an informational slash public, you know, it's not a public hearing by nature, more of an informational. I mean, if we post it in all of our normal places, we notify anybody that, you know, you can notify the existing pits in town, although I understand the moratorium is not going to affect them, if I'm correct.
Right.
You know, we can put it in the newspaper, put it on Facebook, I mean, I'm not sure what a couple of extra days is going to want to do. We want to have it next Thursday.
I just felt it was important to listen to the people that came last week who said they wanted to come in and eat with us. That would give them an opportunity, it's an open forum, we wouldn't have to have a special meeting for that.
Yep.
There's a motion on the floor.
All in favor of...
Haven't.
Public meeting, you want to do it on the 13th? Is that what we're saying?
Yeah.
Did you say seven days?
Yeah, it's, we're not, we're not required, legally required to have a public hearing, so it's, you know, you're holding an extra meeting anyways.
So next?
Thursday.
Next Thursday.
The 13th?
Yeah.
And a planning board meeting the same day?
Right.
Is there a notice requirement on that, the planning board meeting?
Well, the, the board and selectmen have a policy that says 10 days, but based on all the zoning that you're working on, I'm, I'm sure they will support the waiving of a couple of days. We do that for Warren and Finance when they're right in the middle of a budget. I mean, I will go post meetings before I leave tonight, that's eight days.
Okay.
I'm sure they'll be fine with me authorizing the two-day waiver.
All in favor?
So we're going to advertise a public hearing with that draft. I'm going to release it the way it is. That'll start at six and your meeting will follow after?
Yes.
Perfect. Good night.
Thank you. All right, back to Contractor Yards, I think.
Okay, contractors.
Just really quickly as an overview, again, a definition and use of the land use chart or modification of it that exists in there. Contractor Yards under this would not be a permitted use in any district, just conditional in some of them. And again, kind of a stab at it on our part just by looking at allowed uses in those districts. Absolutely glad to be told that we missed the mark on one or more of those districts. Or if you feel that they should be at permitted use in one of the districts, I'm glad to get that feedback as well. Particularly if no, I mean, I think it's clear that the point of this and having this in there is to minimize the impact of, of uses like this, relying heavily on the performance standards that already exist in the good neighbor section of your zoning ordinance in 5 dot 11. But I think also allowing, allowing it as conditional uses gives the board the opportunity to have a second glance at it and making sure that it's really meeting the spirit of that good neighbor ordinance, providing buffers that are wide enough, screening that is thick enough, and all the other requirements that are in, that are in the language of 511.
I would question the, it, in rural... For conditional use or...
Yeah. Contractor Yard and the rural area, I'm not sure of that.
I know, that's...
That's something we'd want to look at is, is where some Contractor Yards are now so that...
so that we're not creating a situation where we, we just made a whole bunch of people non-conforming, so to speak, which, which could be the case in the rural area. I thi, I think one of the biggest things about the contractor yard is, is that there is a conditional use, so that they can come in and, and we can go over some simple standards with them, which I think a lot of it would be buffers, just the visibility of these things, but also the scale of them. So that, that would be something we would want to discuss is where we would want these things. I think that overall, the lineup looks pretty good on this piece of paper. I think it makes sense, what we've, what we've got there, but it's obviously going to take more discussion. I don't know if there's any changes I would make to it tonight.
Yeah, I would, I think we need some more discussion about what you said regarding putting somebody now out of compliance. I think there's concern about these things and, and I'm not necessarily sure that's a bad idea.
Mm-hmm.
One question I had, though, is, is the definition is focused on the construction, on a construction contractor? Would there be, you know, these yards associated with other industries?
Yes, I think, let me read this to make sure it reads that way. Yeah, I think it does apply, I mean, it does say, construction equipment, other materials. I think the, the nature of the definition is that it's kind of anticipating that. You want to steer clear from the stepping into the definition of a junkyard, because those are highly sensitive, and if Jason was in the room, I'm sure he'd be nodding. So we want to make a clearer line of marcation, this is this, this is that. So I think that's part of it. This is equipment and materials that are in use in some, in some fashion. So that's, I'm stumbling around my words, because I, I don't want to, I don't want to try to rewrite the definition right here off the top of my head.
Yeah, yeah, that's just another question.
We are, we are talking about materials that are, that are turning over, not necessarily, again, the distinction between that and a junkyard should be pretty, pretty clear.
Does there need to be something in this definition about the time factor? I mean, it seems to me, in the strictest sense of the word, I have a lot, and I've hired a contractor, and he or she leaves their acquainted materials and so forth there on my lot, it becomes a contractor's yard by this definition. And that's a problem. If they're, you know, they're there because, over the course of the next two months, they're constructing something for me, so they're leaving their equipment there, they're leaving the materials, there's nothing here that differentiates that from someone who, that's their contractor's yard, they always keep equipment there and materials that they then haul to another site to do the work. So it could cut both ways, because if we say, well, we all know what that means, then we go to enforce, you know, someone who does it all the time, that is their business, and they say, oh, well, you know, this is only here for the next two months, and then I'm going to move it. So I, I would think timeliness needs to be a factor on this.
I, I, it's funny, we did have that conversation, kind of exploring this with Ben, as we were kind of writing this down, and I think you cross, there's a line of the land use issue here, defining this as, as a use of land in some of these districts, and the code enforcement piece of this, which is making sure that someone's compliant with this being a contractor yard versus something else, where some of the storage of materials is becoming more permanent, and there is gray there. So I, that's, I think, where it gets kind of to the code enforcement bit.
If you have, this isn't, I, I know what you're saying, Bernard, but, yeah, this is, the contractor yard would be, is somebody storing their own equipment, running a business out of their yard, or running the business and then bringing their equipment back to the yard. It's not, if you're doing a, a project at your house and you have a contractor storing his.
Oh, I understand that, I understand the spirit of it, but I think, in terms of what's, the written word.
Yeah, I don't have that, for some, I don't have the copy.
The written word doesn't distinguish it.
Why? Because you could be working on something forever.
Thank you.
And consider it to be a working construction site. Maybe an addition to this definition would be something like not being an ongoing construction site as permitted by code office or, or something like that, which is, also has a timeline with them, or some definition that tells that this is an ongoing construction site.
Temporary project.
I could have a tractor in my yard because I'm digging a hole and it takes me two years to do it, and it would be, yeah, but it's an ongoing construction, so.
I mean, if you put in the fact that somebody was, if, that does not concern if you were to hire a contractor, you know, so if you had, if the contractor was at your, your property for, for hire, then it wouldn't be a contractor yard, right? If you threw something like that in there, or?
Well, the permit, how long is a permit good for?
Two years.
So, but you're not going to store equipment for two years.
I guess, yeah, so again, I guess my point would be, as to that language and the various zones, there's a deeper conversation to be had than to just say, yep, that's good or nope. So, just saying.
I, I think you just need to really emphasize that it's the contractor's yard, not a customer's yard.
Well, yes.
Right.
Right.
Because.
But without some, the contractor could own his or her home in Acton and have all that stuff there, and then with this, if confronted, they can say, oh, well, you know, that's for the barn I'm going to build next month. I mean, it, it's not, I, I understand what you're saying, but how do you enforce it? It's not an either or, that either that equipment is on land that they own, and so therefore it's a contractor's yard, or their tractor and equipment and everything is at their neighbor's yard, so therefore it's probably okay, because they're going to be building a house for them. Or, or people get smart about it and they say, well, if I keep all my contractor stuff at Pat's house, I don't own the yard, so therefore they can't say, well, that's Bernie's contractor yard. I think it needs some work.
A couple more things I'd, I'd like to just mention with, to do with contractor yards, is that some of these places are inherited, it's like your father had the business and he was going to fix that 10 years ago, and some of these things are permanent entities, and I would like some sort of verbiage that, that, that indicated that, that the, the line between a, you know, like he's saying, a junkyard, or like a, a used equipment yard and an ongoing contractor yard. And also, I'd like, I'd like to have something about the size of these things that limits their size in, in some capacity, whether it's to one acre, two acres, something that, that keeps them from continually spilling out throughout the landscape. But I think we should probably just move on to solar, get a, get an overview of the solar, and at the next meeting, maybe we can write off some comments to send to North Star about each one of these, so that we don't have to try and.
But before we jump into solar, let me point, that's a good point about the size of the yards, and I'll just point out one thing that, that we did look at, we looked at some similar contractor yard or other, similar defined uses in other towns, and did notice that in some other towns, they do have limitations on size, and, you know, to address one of your concerns, if it's on the same site as another use, in other words, if it's your house and also you're storing stuff there, you know, limiting the amount of acreage that's allowed to be a storage area versus, this is primarily, it's, because it should be primarily residential in that case. So there are kind of, we have looked at some other standards that did sort of toss in some size restrictions and limitations, depending on the nature of the site. So it goes beyond just, I think, what exists in your good neighbor standards, which is primarily just buffering, reducing the impacts and those kinds of things. So food for thought and for conversation later, if there are, there are some notes on that in the memo that was attached to it, and if those are the kinds of things that you want to see some language on, we can definitely put, put that together and can even provide you. I think the example I cited in there is Gorham. You know, you can look that up, or I'm glad to send it over, and so you can kind of take a look at how, how that's handled for, for that discussion, if you think that would be helpful. But, thank you. Really good feedback on that as well. So, I think, solar, should we jump in with two feet on this?
Yep.
So I, this is the more of the complicated of the three, simply because distinctions have to be drawn in different types of solar production operations, from the accessory uses, where it's someone who's producing power onsite for use on that site, and typically those are, tend to be very small. You're talking about someone who has their panels in, in their home or at the side of their business, versus larger solar production operations, whether those be solar farms with multiple users who have meters onsite, or other even much larger uses. So each one of these three, the way we did it here is to break them down, is to treat each of those slightly differently. And I'm trying to give this to you in the, in a quick nutshell, because I, I don't think I'm spoiling anything by saying that we're probably going to end up in a place where the board feels like it wants to have a further discussion on this. That seems to be the theme for the evening, which is, like I said, these are meant to be conversation starters, so that's absolutely, that's absolutely valid feedback. But in the nutshell, these uses are all subject to site review, they are, we again took a stab on, on districts for where they're permitted, the ones for accessory solar farm mirrors where accessory uses are permitted. So anywhere you can have an accessory use, you can have solar energy as an accessory use. Medium and large solar farms, the distinction there is the size, the size of the solar array, so not just the site, but the actual operation itself, the breaking point is two acres of actual coverage of equipment, panels and those sorts of things. Once you go above two acres, you go to the large solar farm distinction. So, and once you get to the large solar farm distinction, there are higher standards of making sure that there are less of a risk of impact to important resources, whether those be natural resources like habitats, water drainage, natural, historical and archaeological assets that might be on the site, that those aren't being impacted. So it's, to go for a large solar farm would require a bit more homework on behalf of the applicant to, to demonstrate to the town that they're not having those impacts by producing this. Again, I think the idea behind a lot of the solar ordinances that we've worked on and that we've looked at is to minimize the impact of these. And no exception here, we have buffering and performance standards that include buffering and other requirements that I think are, are definitely worth looking at, it's the last page of the ordinance, so there's 13 solar farm district standards, and the dimensional standards do also cover that, limiting, you know, making sure you have a minimum lot size and maximum height of, of your panels and things like that. So those are worth looking at and worth thinking about, whether or not those district standards are appropriately minimizing the impact. I will call your attention to one that I think definitely merits some discussion, just based on what we've, what we've seen, and that is the issue of visibility. A lot of communities are concerned about the visual impact of, of solar operations, solar farms, especially the larger ones, and particularly, we've heard this a lot from communities who have large water bodies that are used for just, A, natural beauty and B, recreation, people don't want to see them from the water. So the standard that we've, that has been used in a lot of these cases is visibility or viewability, because that's what you're concerned with, whether or not you can see it. However, it gets to be a little bit weird, and it turns into questions about what is, you know, visible means you can just see it at any time, so, you know, if you're talking about a project that were to be built in the fall, you know, as the leaves are coming down, it's going to be a lot more visible this time of year, December, January, than it would be when there's full foliage. And likewise, the buffering and landscape buffering requirements that are in here do have, you know, that vegetation as a buffer, but again, when those are planted right off the bat, those trees aren't going to be at full growth and there's going to be a lot more visibility. So you have to think about that in terms of the, the buffering that's required and what that's going to do to, to visibility, because it may not meet the standard as it's constructed, and that may be the way that it just is. And that has caused a lot of friction, because it's like, well, no, you have to meet the standard as you build it, so you have to build, you have to plant 50-foot trees, and they go, what? So that creates an issue for applicants and for towns, because we've also heard from some towns that they do want to be very forward-thinking and promoting the development of solar power and cleaner energy in their community, and to have that as part of their community's identity. So a lot of them are finding that there's a chilling effect on, on those projects because of some of these standards being a little bit harder to wrap their hands around and actually implement. The other piece of visibility is, you're talking, visibility means any visibility, so, you know, you have a situation where you have a solar project that's miles away, someone's standing there with binoculars saying, yep, well, I can see it, because I can see the top corner of that last solar panel up on the left-hand side, technically that is visible. So, but without any further guidance on, you know, how that visibility standard ought to be enforced, and where there's a breaking point of this is too visible, it's now having the visual impact that we want to avoid, versus, well, yes, you can see the top corner of that, or yes, you can see that now, because all the leaves are off the trees. So visibility always becomes a, a difficult one to hold as the standard. But we put it in here for lack of other direction or other options, but I, I do want to at least call that to the board's attention as something worthy of discussion, as you think about how to properly enact an ordinance that takes care of the impacts that you want to minimize as a community. So that's a, that's an overview on this, and again, this one's a little bit beefier, just because we're kind of handling this in triplet, as an accessory use, as a, you know, medium solar farm, and as a large solar farm. So glad to take feedback on this, and would look forward to hearing the results of a larger community conversation on what you'd like to see for solar going forward in Acton.
I have a quick, quick feedback on the land use chart once again. All these Ps are, indicate it's permitted without a permit, I think they should be replaced with Rs, which is CEO review, must be reviewed by CEO, and a permit may be required. So pretty much every P on this chart maybe should turn into an R.
Yeah, we currently, they have to come.
Right, and I, I would, we're looking at, what we have in the ordinance right now is on page 18, it's the last two brackets under essential uses, and we've broken it into renewable energy installed on an existing structure, and renewable energy installed on a non-existing structure, that's what we have right now, which I don't mind breaking, I don't mind changing the, the brackets, but right now, for it to be installed on existing structure, it is CEO review. So that would be my quick.
Sure, you, I'm sorry, are you recommending that for all the ones that are just accepting? Sure, I'm sorry, are you recommending that for all the ones that are just accessory or for all of them across the?
Yeah, all, every P on this chart would be turned into an R would be my thought.
Gotcha. Well, the medium and large would be conditional use, right?
Right, yeah, so accessory would be R across the line and then medium and large would, would I guess be conditional use or site plan review depending on, but that's something we probably need to talk about more at length with the board itself.
They are subject to site plan review. Did I goof this?
Existing in our ordinance right now, we only have them as conditional use, which, given the scale of some of the projects we saw, it probably would have been applicable for us to have had site plan review on these. But I haven't read all this, so I don't know what the difference between a medium and a large is and I feel like the board will, would be better answered, better able to give you feedback, you know, after we go over next week, pretty much.
Well, on further review, I think I did goof this because for medium and large, I did not mean to make those Ps. Those probably should at the very least be an S because those will be subject to site plan review.
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
If not, something more. So that will absolutely be a correction if it requires revision because some of those should be more than just site plan review and maybe go to a C. I'll leave that to the board to give you that feedback, but that's a correction that's on me and that ought to be made regardless.
No, I'm good.
So we want to, we'll all discuss this next week too then? Do more homework on it.
Four different meetings. Not four hours, that's two.
Right, we'll try to touch on it next week, but we can't, we can't honestly say we're going to get to it, but that would be the idea.
I'll be in touch with Jason to kind of get the nutshell on what feedback or what direction you want to take with these. So I get the sense that, you know, you don't, you won't have that meeting as a board, so I will not be here for that, but I'll be in touch. We'll get the, get the direction we need one way or the other, so.
Yeah, I think we should, we should probably plan on getting you back pretty soon because we do have to. Do you want to, we do have to get these lined up for, for the selectmen to get spaces on the warrant.
Right. Do you want to have him back at our regular scheduled meeting, the third Thursday of the month, or do you want to have him back the fourth?
Well, isn't the fourth we have to have?
No, I'm talking the fourth Thursday. So we have.
Oh, you want to do the 27th?
The 13th, which you're going to do the public hearing next week, the 20th and then the 27th are Thursdays. And we don't have, if you guys want to do it, I mean, we can find out if we can do it another night, if you guys don't want to just do it on Thursday or you want to, you know, whatever works for you guys as long as I can get it out to the public so that they can know about it.
I mean, unless we plan on just doing?
We got to have this kind of wrapped up to give to, for the fourth. Not wrapped up, but at least give them something to work with.
Why don't we just plan on working on the bigger one, on after the public hearing and maybe try to grind out the other two on the regular meeting on the 20th?
I think that public hearing is going to take a long time.
You think?
Well, I think that we should make, you know, make notes on all three of them that we can all review together fairly concisely, having thought about it on our own time and then, you know, after the hearing, go over those bullet items, reach one that we've thought of and then see if, I mean, I think if we tentatively scheduled to have you back on the 20th, but we may have to push you out till the 27th would be, because I, I mean, it's hard to predict.
I agree.
Yeah.
My suggestion would be that we schedule whatever meeting it is, that we're going to do our work and then invite him to come back when we're ready for that, rather than having a date that he's coming back and us not being ready, which is then another interruption in the discussion.
Right.
I think we'll be able, we'll be able to come up with how many proposed changes we have to the zoning ordinance at the next meeting. I think that's a really good goal. We need to figure out how many of these things we're going to try to go forward on. Because that's the most important information to pass on to the other committees is that they need to know how many placeholders, so to speak, we need in the warrant.
Yes.
I think we can always ask some more if we don't use those spaces, you know what I mean?
Yeah, but they like to know what the space is for.
Right.
So we'll want to, you know, if we're saying we're going to have four items or we're going to have six items, we nail those down at the next meeting and then the actual nitpicking each one doesn't necessarily need to be done by the beginning of February. We just need to have a draft and a number for it. So maybe we should just schedule the 27th and to review these things with everyone, with North Star and then that'll give us the 20th to do some nitpicking first on our own.
I won't be here on the 27th, but you know, you guys don't need, if you, I'm just letting you know, if you need me here, I still won't be here.
And the 27th wouldn't, isn't in regular scheduled meeting either.
No.
It would be in additional.
It'd be, yeah, it's the fourth.
Well, we may need that to finish even before North Star.
Yeah, I don't think we are going to be ready on the 20th.
So the fourth is a Friday, we'll still have a February 3rd is another Thursday.
Right, but like I was saying, we just need to know.
Right, no, I know what you're saying.
You know what I mean, we don't need, it doesn't need to be finalized by February 4th, it just needs to be, this is the number we're doing, these are what are the warrant hurdles goals are going to be and, in a nutshell, and then the actual verbiage can be tweaked during the month of February.
Well, do you want to bring him in on the 3rd then?
Why don't we wait and see how far we get?
How quick of a notice do you need?
We can be flexible. I mean, if you met on the 20th and said, you know, I mean, I want to put the 27th and the 3rd on the calendar as like tentative question mark waiting and if we heard on the 20th that, you know, we were going to be coming back on the 27th, I think we could, I think we could do that.
Okay, that's good.
We will, we will do our best to be flexible.
Okay. Vegas Jason, well, you'll have to contact him for us. Even if you're not here, you're still going to have to work for us.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm gone for the, and that, from the 27th to the 2nd.
We should know on the 20th what we're looking at.
Yeah, because we got nothing on the 20th except for this stuff to work on, right?
Um, correct, so, yeah, next week we got the planning board, uh, the planning, the public hearing. 20th will be, we'll talk to the applicant on the sidewalk on Saturday and see if we can just push them out so that we can just strictly work on ordinance. I had, we already spoken with them and they said they weren't in a rush anyway. They don't, they're not, you know, and I think they're pretty flexible, they'll be, they'll be fine with it. So then you'll have the 20th and then the 27th. I'm not putting anything on the agenda as well. Well, 27th will be a special meeting.
Right.
If you guys opt into that and that will be strictly, again, ordinance only. And I'm not putting anything on the agenda until we have these ordinances wrapped up, you know, until the planning board feels comfortable that they would like to hear any kind of conditional use applications or anything like that. So until then, until further notice, it's, we're going strictly ordinance based for the.
Why is, is that what the board is saying they want?
I think that's what you need to do.
Well, I know, but I thought we talked about us maybe having additional meetings if we needed to so that we could at the same time be advancing things that people have applied for.
We're only, we're, so we have one on the table right now, everything else is on hold. The one that is, is here tonight. We don't, yeah, we're dealing, yeah, ordinances.
Everyone fine with that?
Yeah, I don't know what else is on, is backlog on the docket, so to speak, but um, I mean it.
We can only do so much.
Yeah, yeah, we do, do have a full agenda tonight and we expect it to be like that, so.
Right. You'll be in touch with Jason?
Yeah, I will and I'll make some quick changes based on this discussion tonight on some things where we, I think there was some consensus where it should change and that'll provide you some new fuel for the discussion on the 27th and then maybe I'll see you on the 3rd.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you all very much.
Yeah, thank you for your work. All right, old business, Seth McCoy Trucking and Excavating, 2491 H Road, Lot 207-001. Application for conditional use for stump grinding, stump and brush disposal, recycle and reuse of mulch. All right, Mr. McCoy, come on up. Welcome.
Hello.
So, you want to just start them over again on the, that or, I mean?
Yes, I think we should read through the performance standards for mineral extraction. I think it would be useful to the board as well as the applicant and the audience to, to verbalize what's in the ordinance right now pertaining to mineral extraction and then once we've read through those standards, we can return to the conditional use checklist which we were on at the ending of our previous meeting.
What page on, Kevin?
I'm on, I'm on page 53. I'd be willing to read through the performance standards.
Okay.
I mean, you can note there is some verbiage on the previous page, but it's, it's not really applicable to tonight. It's why you need a permit, earth moving not requiring conditional use permit. So, and then D, performance standards. So if anybody wants to say anything, they can, otherwise we can just read through them so we know kind of where we are. Everybody got that? It looks like most people have that open.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, so, "No part of any extraction operation including drainage and runoff control features shall be permitted within the shoreline or resource protection districts." Number one, "No part of any extraction operation shall be permitted within 100 feet of any property or street line except the drainage ways to reduce runoff or from the extraction area may be allowed up to 50 feet of such line. Natural vegetation shall be left and maintained on the undisturbed land." Two, "If any standing water accumulates, the site must be fenced in a manner adequate to keep children out. Measures shall be taken to prevent or halt the breeding of harmful insects." Number three, "Before commencing removal of any earth materials, the owner or operator of the extraction site shall present evidence to the planning board of adequate insurance against liability arising from the proposed extraction operations and such insurance shall be maintained throughout the period of operation. The insurance company shall be licensed by the state of Maine as qualified to provide such insurance." Number four, "Topsoil or loam shall be retained to cover all disturbed land areas which shall be reseeded and stabilized with vegetation native to the area. Additional topsoil or loam shall be obtained from off-site sources if necessary to complete the stabilization project. Any topsoil and subsoil suitable for purposes of vegetation shall, to the extent required for restoration, be stripped from the location of extraction operations and stockpiled for use in restoring the location after the extraction operations have ceased. Such stockpiles shall be protected from erosion." Number five, "Hours of operation at any site shall be limited as the planning board deems advisable to ensure operational compatibility with the residents of the town." Number six, "All access egress roads leading to and from the extraction site to public ways shall be treated with suitable materials to reduce dust and mud for a distance of at least 100 feet from such public ways." Number seven, "No equipment, debris, junk or other materials shall be permitted on an extraction site except those directly related to active extraction operations and any temporary shelters or buildings erected for operations and equipment used in conjunction therewith shall be removed within 30 days following the completion of an active extraction operation." Number eight, "Within 12 months of the completion of extraction operations at any extraction site, which operation shall be deemed complete when less than 100 cubic yards of material are removed in any consecutive 12-month period on any one or more locations within any extraction site. Ground levels and grades shall be established in accordance with the following. All debris, stumps, boulders, similar materials shall be removed for disposal or to an approved location or shall be buried onsite. Only materials generated onsite shall be buried onsite. B, storm drainage and water courses shall leave the location at the original natural drainage points and in a manner such that the amount of drainage at any point is not significantly increased. C, the final graded slope shall be two and a half to one slope or flatter. And D, in keeping with the purposes of this ordinance, the planning board may impose such conditions as are necessary to minimize the adverse impacts associated with the mineral extraction operations on surrounding uses and resources." And this permit approval as well. "All plans and supporting materials shall be submitted to the planning board for their consideration with respect to the effect of the proposed operation upon existing and foreseeable traffic patterns within the town, upon existing or approved land uses which may be affected by the operation and implementation of comprehensive plan policies. The planning board may obtain technical assistance from the Soil Conservation Service, Regional Planning Commission, Department of Environmental Protection or a consulting engineer to review the plans at the expense of the applicant." Number two, "The planning board shall hold a public hearing on the application. The planning board shall make findings of fact and render a written decision specifying whether and under what conditions the proposed operation shall be permitted. The planning board shall require filing with the town treasurer, a commercial security bond, a certified check or a savings account passbook payable to the town of Acton in such amount and upon such conditions as the planning board may determine to be adequate to indemnify the town against any claims arising from the proposed operation and assure satisfactory performance of all conditions imposed or otherwise applicable." So there's, there's quite a bit there. I don't think we've had an applicant since this, this board has come into fruition that has caused us to read through the performance standards, so. I feel like I should have done it last meeting, or, and, uh, two, or two meetings ago, and, um... That's what we have in the zoning ordinance. And we can either start with the conditions at the top of the, at the beginning of 6.6.3.4, or we can pick off where we left off.
Maybe we should start from the top again, 'cause I think it'd just be easier from 6.6.3.4.
Mm-hmm. All right. Do you want me to read through those? And someone will respond?
Hopefully.
Yes, no, and any?
Yeah.
All right?
Should be in your folder.
It could be in your, here.
It's also in the zoning ordinance, page 6, uh, 88. All right. Everybody there, all right? So, the use will not have an hidden, adverse impact on spawning grounds, fish, aquatic life, bird, or other wildlife habitat.
Yes, second page.
Yes, second page.
Yeah, I mean, I can start at the beginning of
Should be a, God.
Of the conditional use. There's, there's the first page, but, uh, we didn't, um...
Do you have it, Pat?
It should be.
Do you have it?
She's got it.
Yeah.
The only, um, thing we discussed on that page was the, uh, whether or not we were talking about new materials or processes not previously associated with the existing use. And we decided that, um, stumps were, were very similar materials to the, the processes associated with the existing use, so we didn't, we weren't too concerned about that.
Right.
I, I have a concern about the stumps.
Okay.
Causing invasive, um, insects. We have a Maine firewood law. And I was reading just one egg can cause an explosion in invasive insects. And they also breed in the stumps. I think that, um, it was mentioned that they had to be, um, handled in a certain way, and the piles had to be turned, and the stumps had to be ground within a certain time and so forth. Um, my concern is that would be opening up the door, um, to this potential.
And that would certainly fall underneath 6.6.3.4A, which I just read, 'cause so everybody knows that we have the Emerald Ash Bore and the Woolly Indeljit, as well as other invasive insects in Acton, um, and the surrounding areas. Well, um... How can we address this concern?
Uh, honestly, I consider that. As State of Maine, DEP didn't say anything to me about any concern for bugs, so I'm assuming in their permit by rule set of guidelines, they must have already figured out a way to address it. It doesn't mention anything in their paperwork that I've seen, anything in the state, and it's, perhaps I've heard of it. I know across the state lines, but I'm in Maine. I don't work in New Hampshire.
That is something I think about. I think it was with the fire, transporting firewood.
Over the last time, there were pretty strict rules on how they want it turned over.
Mm-hmm.
Piles, the, the, the the actual pile stumps grounded a certain timeframe, and they want the pile of mulch turned over to create heat. So, it doesn't create heat. So, I'm, honestly, I don't really have the answer for you, because I talked to DEP probably three or four hours on the phone, over several phone calls, and that was never mentioned once by them as even a concern.
Was the firewood law just from, say, bringing it from New Hampshire to Maine, or Mass to Maine, or was there?
I think it was within counties within Maine, too, 'cause some, some counties don't have the well, uh, Emerald Ash Bore and but I, I think we're considered an infected county. So, it, it could, it could be more that, that, that we wouldn't wanna be taking wood from here and taking it up north somewhere where they don't have it.
Right.
Um, but I think maybe getting it right in the operation notes, how often the piles are gonna be ground up, so they're not sitting there.
I mean, is that, is that bore, I mean, I don't know anything about the bore, other than we all, I have some trust of authority that he asked for it, but, uh, just for the town, but I guess my question is, is it in the dead stumps, or the, or stumps that, from trees that recently died? 'Cause these are stumps that are already pulled.
They breed in the stumps. You'd be increasing the concentration.
In stumps pulled, piled up?
Of increasing the population.
What I'm asking, do they breed in stumps that are piled up, or stumps that are in the ground?
I can't answer that question.
'Cause I would really think that it was a concern, DEP knowing, I didn't know Acton was an area, but if, if Acton is an area, I would have thought DEP would have said something to me.
Here's the difference, 'cause if it's still in the ground, it's still alive to a good stop that have been pulled and been out of the ground.
Because stumps in the ground were trees, pretty quickly.
There's a reason why they ask you to grind it.
But I think if we get a condition that says you'll, you'll you won't have the stump stockpiled for more than X amount of time, that might...
Yeah, but it already says that. The state, it requires it.
I think what you put was one year, correct?
One year. A month period.
Is that what the state requires?
Yeah.
And they already did mention about turning the pile, yeah.
How long, how many, do you have to turn the stump piles? How many, and within a year, how many times within a year?
The stump piles have to stay within, uh, I believe it's 10,000 square feet.
No, how many?
How many times a year do you have to turn them?
You don't have to turn stump piles. They only want you to turn the loom, they only want you to turn the, uh, mulch piles, so that's after it's ground.
Yeah.
When it created heat. And the product you make from it is, the product you use, I, I, I don't think you were at the last meeting, but the product that's made from the ground stumps is for erosion control.
I, I guess the major concern here is that you would dig up a stump from a tree that was green, so you dug it up that day, threw it right in the truck, brought it up to Acton. The stump would still be alive, the, the, some soil would still be on it, there'd be some soil on the stump. And the critters could be living in there, and they could go to the
I think the
budding forest, the, you know, the trees that are next to the pit and infest them. I think that's the... So, I mean, grinding them within a year, or every year, wouldn't really address that. Um, but...
I think either a live stump or a dead stump, you're gonna, they're still gonna nest on them and lay their eggs.
Well, depending on the species of tree.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's kind of the biggest thing, is that...
If the problem is in Acton, though, how would you be hurting it by home? I'm not trying to reinvent the wheel, but if the problem is in Acton and not in the other towns, and the stumps are coming here, how would that affect anything, anyway?
It's, it's everywhere.
Say, whether it's on this side of Acton or that side of Acton, it's not matter.
Right, even if it's not on this side of Acton, if you bring them in from another town, you're, you're still bringing it, you're, you're importing, not exporting, I mean... Bugs can live in polluted water, they can live in dead logs, dead stumps.
It's, it certainly is a good, good question that we, uh, overlooked at the previous meeting when we were reading through these, um... I mean, we could, I mean, it, we would have to identify the species of insects that we were concerned with, and...
I mean, I just looked up the Emerald Ash Bore, I've never looked it up, it says that it literally only lives and breeds in the bark of the tree. So, I mean...
Well, there's bark on the stump, I mean...
Yeah, this much?
There's some, I mean...
But if it's dead, I, I mean, I guess, I didn't
Well, if you got a stump this big, or this big, there's more bark on a stump than this big, than this big, I mean... It would...
Yeah?
Ashley just pulled something up for me, uh, and I'll just read it out, and, um... If bores were in the tree, so do Emerald Ash Bores live in dead wood? If bores were in the tree, when you had it removed, there's a good chance they're still there. So, assume Emerald Ash Bores is in dead wood. Don't transport it farther than fif- further than 50 miles from where it was cut, because the Emerald Ash Bores could infest the whole area. Um... There's other ideas, what you can do with dead ash trees, um, that have the Emerald Ash Bore, um... Hire a certified tree company and they dispose of the wood. They don't say how, or where, and it goes cheap and easy mulch. Have a company who removed your ash trees turn your wood into mulch. Now, those trees can nourish the other plants in your yard, so chipping it on your spot, I guess, is what it is, on site. Um... Burn them. So... Recycle, find a nearby recycling center for your old ash tree, which I don't know if that's, what he's considered as, I mean, he is recycling it, but I don't know. That's kind of all it really does, I mean, they don't really give you any good insight on what to do with it.
Except to keep it on site is kind of the indication they have.
But some, they said something about, don't transport it more than 50 miles, or something like that, but...
Right.
I don't think, we are, so the, I guess, we already have those in the area, right? There, we both have both of them.
Yeah.
We're infested, we're infested with both of them.
But there's a whole list of...
Yeah, there's the pine weevil, the longhorn, Asian beetle. It just takes one egg.
Well... We can go on to the next, next one, and...
Is there a state bug guy that we could call for an opinion on? You know, remediation or requirements?
Probably.
I think there are a number of sources you can use.
Yeah, I'm, I'm from Maine fishing game, would know somebody, or even probably a state of Maine, has an entomologist, they...
Sure, if you call Eric at the DEP office, he could probably answer everything you have about it.
We can call Eric.
Did you call him already? Did, did you have, no? I had a conversation with him, but I honestly didn't even think about that whatsoever, so, uh, I was more trying to find out about his, what he's, the procedure, what he was doing. Um... And it wasn't an issue that he brought up to me either, so, I mean, it's definitely something to look into.
So, the land use office will contact the, contact the entomologist, or, or someone qualified like a entomologist in the region?
How long has Acton had the problem?
It's fairly recent, or, I mean, it's...
Because, I mean, my land was actually recently cut, I mean, I don't know, probably 10 years ago. I don't know if that was the reason behind it.
It's within 10 years that it's moved in, that's for sure.
They found it right down here about three years ago. Then they came on our land, made a windmill of it, and they cut a couple samples. About a few months later, they came back and told us that, uh, we had it. If you go up the H Road, past the dump, and you go up the hill on the left, there's a bunch of trees. There, there's one big ash. If you look at the carrot where you see the, the veins, and then you'll see it's bleached and the clothes are on, that's a dead ash tree. Same on, uh, Nasa Road, there was a whole bunch of them. It's here to stay.
Right.
I know a lot of people in the lakes, they, um, actually inject, they have the trees injected to try to prolong them, and some of the ones with the woolly, whatever it is. Yeah, I know that there, a lot of people are having them sprayed, and they actually inject the tree, uh, I think you have to agree, go back to that every it's, every year, every five years, I can't remember what I was told, what I was explained, but, yeah. Once you have it, it's yeah, it's not going away.
Okay, so we'll leave that one blank for now, waiting for more information? Is that the thought of the board? Okay. So, B, the use will conserve shore cover and visual as well as actual access to water bodies. I mean, the, the, the proposed use has no greater impact than the existing use of the pit itself, so I would say yes. Okay, C, the use is consistent with the comprehensive plan.
I really think that, you know, the comprehensive plan is important, because that's where all the zoning comes from. It's talking about rare and endangered species, wetlands, um, you know, performing critical functions with the release of waters during storm events, um... What about the wet area leaching into the pit? Not, not what's draining off of the pit, but what if, what if it goes the other way? What kind of, um, impact would that have? Do stumps have, um, toxins in them?
Meaning like, uh, not...
Did you read the application form? 'Cause it answered all those questions. The, the product that we make is for erosion control. If we, if this is the product we would make, is for erosion control. It literally is to do what you say you wanna protect. It's the product that you use.
Yeah, but she's asking if they have, like, per se, the forever chemicals that have been popping up, you know what I'm saying? Do you watch the news?
I, I understand, but I mean, do people go through that much effort when they buy firewood for their homes?
No, but this is something completely different.
What's the difference? It's still trees.
You're grinding up stuff and storing stuff on a pad.
We're grinding it out.
Understandable, but you're, it's still sitting there for up to a year's time.
I follow the state permit by rule. I got all the questions answered for the last meeting, and, and I presented a packet to you guys that literally does answer, almost, it has, there's, I think there's like 60 questions asked by people, and they're answered by the state. It, it is a pretty well-searched thing. I think it's section 400 in the state, uh, actually.
401.
401, and they lay, they, they, and the people that handle it in DEP are very easy to deal with, and they give you everything you need to know. Chapter 401, 409, chapter, section 7.
409?
Yeah, 409, section 7.
I had read something about...
Oh, you're right, you're right. Chapter 400, section 1 defines it, though.
Independent of that, um... I had read that tree silvers, most of the chemicals and the toxins end up in the stump. They're concentrated there.
And that is exactly why the state wants to have, you have a permit, so if there ever was a problem, which they haven't had any significant problems, they would know where they're at. That's why you can't take stumps, bury them for a different site.
So, with what we're going over here, um, in keeping with the comprehensive plan, I don't think that that is consistent, because of the groundwater. And the bed bark aquifers, um, some of them being embedded within the sand and gravel. In that particular area, that's a unique feature for the soils.
The restrictions of the mine are literally double the restrictions of the stump pile. So, if it's 500 feet from a So if it's five hundred feet from a well for a stump pile, thousand feet from a well from a mine. Hundred feet from a wetland for a stump pile, two hundred and fifty feet from a mine. Any, any place in that mine is approved by the state for this. Anyplace. We're five feet above the water table, the whole thing. Actually, we're ten, because Acton's all ten, and you have to be four feet. So, I mean, every, any, any place in that active or reclaimed mine heart is okay for a stump pile, according to the state standard. And that's all I have to go off of.
Um, do we want to, how are we gonna...
See.
Respond to that question? Well, in the case where the, there's some question as to how we should fill out this form, we, we have to take a vote of the board, pretty much. Um, or... Or kick the can like we did with the first one, but, um, I, I wouldn't, I don't really want to do that on too many of these things, but, um... If we don't have the information we need, then it's hard for us to answer the question. I know that, from what I just read from the performance standards, we do have, only materials generated on site shall be buried on site, but these stumps are not going to be buried, they're going to be placed on a pretty much impermeable pad to, to prevent contamination of the groundwater in large part, and though we do have to figure out what we're going to do with the stormwater coming off of it, if we're worried about it being contaminated.
And I did make a suggestion, even though it literally can't leave the site because of the pit laws.
Right.
That I could take erosion mix, or a berm on the spot that you were concerned about before, even though it literally can't leak, it would have to go...
Well, I think, I think we'd be concerned about it going down into the groundwater in this case, you know what I mean? It wouldn't be the superficial flow we'd be concerned with, it would be the contaminated water percolating into the aquifer. I don't know, I think we're gonna need to hear from the rest of the board as to whether we should vote on it or...
Well, I think the intent is consistent with the plan. I think the, uh, the pad is, is gonna help address. I think we should put in a condition to include the berm that Seth has offered. But I think on C, I'm comfortable with saying, uh, that the use is consistent with the pad and with the berm.
So sand is used as an actual filter. How, how much, how deep does the sand have to be before it's to, for it to actual filter, before it can actually penetrate? Do you have to... Well, this, this has to have twenty-four inches of glacier, uh, well, it says fifteen to twenty percent fine. Basically, uh, clay, almost. Not, it's not really clay, it's just glacial till. But it, it doesn't actually, the, it's fit, it's, there's only six inches of gravel. And I might, I don't know what their purpose of the gravel is, because usually you go the opposite, you put gravel on top, but I'm assuming it so that it doesn't get muddy.
Yeah.
Or to reduce, you know, so that it dries out maybe.
For stability, so you can operate on it.
Well, and there's gonna be loom falling out of the stops.
Yeah.
I mean, they're in the ground.
Yeah.
I mean, the, if you took fifteen or twenty percent fines, it's basically would be mud. I mean, it's not gonna be a, so you have to put something on top of it. I, I think that's the point of the six inches.
Pat, what is the inconsistency with the comprehensive plan that you perceive?
Um, on, in chapter four, uh, dash six, um... Eleven dash thirteen, groundwater resources, there's a bedrock, bedrock aquifer. And, um, there's a concern, and I'm, I'm not qualified to, to make that call, but I think that there is a concern, a possible concern for groundwater contamination from the, from the chemicals leaching from the stumps.
What page are you on?
Eleven dash thirteen.
You don't have a copy?
I guess I don't have one.
I don't have one on me right now either.
Do you have?
I'm trying to find the page, eleven thirteen.
Are you, um...
Chapter four.
Yeah, chapter four, significant, significant and critical natural resources.
Right.
Yeah, and then...
Eleven.
We did actually roughly touch on this last time. You guys asked about, uh, brought up about dirty dirt, and I said usually if there's a site with dirty dirt, which is most of the time commercial, that dirt is known ahead of time and sent to a processing facility. We talked about this last time. Very briefly, because it's almost honestly pointless, because if there's a tree that big, it most likely wasn't a hazardous spill site there at any point in time. But if you're doing a commercial project and they tested the dirt, it was contaminated, and that dirt has to go to a state process facility anyway. You can't just haul it. There's gonna be somebody there watching the whole job.
Stump goes too?
Everything goes. But the product made from this pad, I don't know if you, if you read the application, but the product made from it is to actually protect the wetlands. This is the product that you use. He requires you to put it on a wetland. The state requires you to put it on a wetland when you're doing a project.
But it, it is tricky to know where the stumps come from, each one of them, and, and how the different sites, how the soils in the different sites are. But, but that's...
I get what you're saying, but I hear what he's saying too, so everybody, every contractor has to use erosion control mulch, mulch in the shoreline zone. I don't require them to tell me where these stumps came from. They, I don't even know if they are required to tell, you know, I'm not gonna go, hey, where did those come from? Canada, you know, or wherever.
Yeah.
You know, so I, I'm... It's, uh, that's, yeah.
I mean, we could certainly put a condition that you don't haul from, stumps from any brown field sites or contaminated sites of record.
I don't have a problem with that.
I mean, that'd be something, I mean...
If, if it was, if it was a dirty site, I would get paid to haul it someplace else.
Right, well, yeah, well...
That's what I'm saying. Why, there's no point. But I don't have a problem putting it in there at all.
Do you track every truck that comes in and out, where, like, from, just curious, what site to the pit? Say if you're hauling stumps from Jackson's Corner, okay, then you know what trucks are coming from there to, I don't know, name another corner. You know what I mean? Yeah, yeah, you understand what I'm saying? Do you, do you have a logbook of all that?
I've got these, yes.
Okay, no, I'm just curious. Because, well, no, that would help, I mean, if you say if you hauled in...
I mean, I don't, I don't necessarily, I don't, I mean, I guess, I don't tag, well, I haven't hauled these stumps in since November third, but when I did haul stumps in, I didn't tag them. Just angle the site they came from.
Right, you, you understand what I'm saying? Just, just in case something did come up.
I mean, he, he, I didn't know about the fifty mile rule or the ash burrs, but I don't work any further than fifty miles away, and if I was, I'd probably take the stuff to a place that's closer.
Right.
And I can't see any other site contractor hauling stumps fifty miles away to me. I'd probably go to the closest.
Well, that, that's, I think we're talking more about the, like, arsenic contamination and things like that now. That was the previous one, but we have to just, so, I guess we should keep going around the table and see if, however, everyone feels, whether it's consistent with the comprehensive plan, if we have to vote on it or not. I'm still trying to find the exact, exact, I mean... Exact, um, verbiage that, that Pat's referring to.
Eleven dash thirteen.
I know, but I can't, my page numbers don't...
Yeah, how is that?
Don't line up with that. I've got a four dash one and a, through four dash whatever it is, and then I'm onto five dash one. I've got significant and critical natural resources, but I, the act, you know, and I've been going through it, but... See.
I have the same page numbers as he does for the comprehensive plan. I think she means for eleven through thirteen, because it talks about ground, if you look at Ford Tac eleven, it talks about groundwater resources. Is that what you mean, Pat? Yeah, so it starts there.
What does the town do with their stumps and brush that they're grounded to transfer to the...
They probably go to Simpson's.
Is that where they go, or do they probably go there?
I'm guessing.
Well, we don't, I don't have the answer to that.
I mean, because if you guys are taking brush in, knowing that your town is infected with ash burrs and knowingly letting that go out, out of town, you guys are not really setting a good example for yourselves, to be honest with you.
Well, I think everything that goes to the transfer station comes from within the town boundaries, so that's...
So is the question you're asking, Gavin, is individually whether we are persuaded that it's inconsistent with the comprehensive plan?
Well, basically, just because we...
At this point?
Because, um, we either bypass C and come back to it after gaining more information, or we come to agreement, or we vote on it.
Okay.
Those are the kind of options I see.
I am not persuaded, at this point, that it's inconsistent with the comprehensive plan. I've heard the concerns, I understand, but the section in the comprehensive plan on groundwater resources, sites, where there are currently public water systems in Acton, it indicates, at least at the time this was written, two of them are at the potting shed on one oh nine, and one is at the Acton Elementary School. Um, if we were talking about the potting shed hypothetically, we'd say, oh, what about all the apple trees and all the insecticides sprayed on those right across the road? The, as for the school, um, it cites a concern by the main DHHS for contamination based on the septic system being within three hundred feet of the well, and because there's no legal land use controls within a hundred and fifty feet or greater radius from the well. So... I mean, I guess, I'm thinking, if there's no regulation that close to a well at our school department, I don't see this as being, um, in conflict with the comprehensive plan. That's just my opinion, but, but that is my opinion.
So, I, did you want to say anything, Chris, or?
No, I'm fine.
Okay, so, I guess I'm gonna say that, yes, it is consistent unless, Pat, you wanna vote on it?
I think everybody spoke up. I think we can move on.
Okay, so I'm gonna say, yes, it is as consistent with the comprehensive plan as the pit itself, um, and D, okay. Traffic, track it, blah. All right, traffic access to the site meets the standard contained in this ordinance, and traffic congestion hasn't been addressed in accordance with performance standards in this ordinance. I'd say yes. And I do know that, um, signs have been put up on H Road, um, as you approach the pit, trucks entering signs by the previous owner.
There's no increase in traffic for the, the proposed?
Or a minimal increase, whereas...
Well, you can't go over fifty trucks, no matter what.
Right, true. Right, there might be an increase, but it wouldn't be beyond the fifty permitted.
Right.
So, yes.
I agree. Yes.
The site design is in conformance with all municipal flood hazard protection regulations. Yes, it's not in a flood zone. Adequate provision for the disposal of all wastewater and solid waste has been made. And there are porta-potties on site. Pretty much covers it. Adequate provision for the transportation, storage, and disposal of any hazardous materials has been made. And this is where we got to last time, and I asked you how long it would take to remove the asphalt from the site, and you replied that you were planning on grinding it on site. And we kind of had a little discussion about that, and that was, we didn't come to any sort of conclusion as to what we should do.
I did get some information for you on that, though. The, the only, so, I called the state, DEP. The only asphalt that is, has any significant or any concern to them at all is new asphalt, not in place. If it's fully cured and hardened, there's no concern. So, I'm, try to be a good business guy, there's no way I'd go buy a load of asphalt at like two thousand dollars, bring it up there, dump, let it cool off, grind itself with water. No, no way. But that's about the only time you're gonna have a concern, because it's not cured, so it has been compacted, so it can leak, hypercarbons, like you said. But that's, fully cured asphalt does not have any, there's no issues with it at all.
I, what, the reason I picked this particular section G to mention the asphalt is because that was the best place it fit into this checklist. There's nothing on your existing conditional use permit or plan that says anything about asphalt, storage, or grinding, um, and that...
When you read earlier, the stuff you read about my conditions, you said it wasn't important to read the page before. The page before actually says that you're allowed to transport in and out a thousand yards a year without a permit. Like, two paragraphs before you started reading.
A thousand yards of clay.
Of material, it says.
Asphalt is the, without a doubt, the most recycled, hundred percent recyclable construction material. There's hundreds of reports on it, there's no issue with it. And it is aggregate.
I have to respectfully disagree from what I've read.
In its present form?
In its compacted, fully cured form. It has no issues when it's...
But it's aggregate?
Aggregate.
In that form?
It has, yeah, this, I actually...
I mean, I feel like what they're talking about in this, um, we're on page fifty-two, five point nine point two, A one. I feel like that exception is talking about topsoil, rock ledge, sand gravel, and similar earth materials. Um, I don't feel like it's talking about vinyl siding, you know, chipped up glass. Material is very vague in this particular exemption, but it's not, I, I don't feel like it's referring to anything other than the material stated in the above paragraph, because it is a subsection of that paragraph.
I can touch on this with the DEP when I call them about the invasive species.
I think, you can, but I honestly, I feel like it's, it's a use that, it's an ongoing use that's, that's not permitted in its current use, and, and we can bicker about whether it's hazardous or not, and... in its current use and we can bicker about whether it's hazardous or not and whether or not we should, you know.
What I'm saying is it's not against the law for anybody in this town to take a thousand yards of tar and fill their yard in it. It's considered clean fill by the state. Fully cured asphalt. I wrote, I asked DEP to please write me a, just an answer. And there is no issues. And I don't, I don't even need to get a permit for you guys as long as it's ten or a thousand yards. It's in your own, I'm not asking to break the law, I'm not asking to change anything. I'm asking to follow the law and I'm not.
Well, you did break the ordinance by trucking in asphalt when it's not in your general notes, operation notes.
Asphalt is a construction material and it says on the page before that you can bring in, asphalt is three percent.
Well, this is, this is where we got to last time. This is exactly where we got to last time. Well, I feel like I should.
What are you saying is?
Have a discussion with the board, because I feel like I should make a motion that we put it into the note.
I, I agree.
That the asphalt be removed within X amount of time and that no more asphalt be hauled in and then when we review other conditional use permits for mineral extraction, perhaps we'll have to add a note, or maybe we should even put it right in the ordinance that asphalt is not permitted. That's, that would be my direction with this whole thing and I feel like I can make a motion on this particular item under the conditional use. Because I don't see another, another one of these conditions where it would fit better and we can vote on it.
Let me, let me.
Just a question, I'm not trying to, sorry, but if somebody wanted to put reclaimed asphalt, will pave their driveway? Would you guys have a problem with that?
It's a different question.
Yeah.
You're running a pit.
Right.
Essentially, not running a driveway. It's, you know, so this is.
We're. What I'm planning out of that ordinance, if you brought boulders in to crush them up to make little boulders, that's the type of material that they, they're talking about. Asphalt is a manmade product from the materials that you, you know, get out of the ground, but it's in a wholly different form. My opinion, what I saw as soon as they said something about that, that's a recycling operation. That's not within what use was originally.
And I do feel like that is really the crux of the conversation.
Yeah.
It's not, not even pollution to me, because I've.
Do you guys want to take a second and just read what the DEP wrote?
Well, let's just first remember what paragraph seven in the performance standards says, which is no debris, junk or other material shall be permitted on an extraction site except those directly related to active extraction operations. And I think the asphalt doesn't.
It didn't come from there.
Doesn't come from there, right, it was not related.
Brought it in.
I have to talk about the elephant in the room. What about the stumps that were there? Those authorized? Can those be brought in?
Technically, the stump pile is separate from the mine.
You brought them in from elsewhere. Is that in the permit? That's a question.
No, there's nothing in this.
Pat, that's why, that's why he's here right now.
Right, so to steer a violation, ready?
He's trying to comply, so that's what we, in my department, we try to get people to comply before we deal with violations and hence why he's here.
But we're looking at a conditional use permit that's not even being, the current one's not even being followed.
That conditional use does not say stumps can't come from outside. It says that they shove it gravel.
Doesn't say anything about hauling in asphalt. We're not talking about the stump. Violation of that.
So, okay, so my question here is, would you guys allow him to haul sand from another pit into his current pit or rock or gravel from another pit to his pit?
According to the ordinance.
Okay.
He can do.
According to DEP, asphalt is an inert fill and it is the same as same as stone, rock, sand, gravel, silt, clay. That's according to the DEP. I'm just, I'm just trying to read you guys, you guys, some of you guys aren't taking the time to read. And the DEP is stating. So I'm not against you guys whatsoever, but I mean, if.
It says in the last sentence is basically from department perspective, you may accumulate, store and reuse this material in any per, any of the purposes described without the need of a solid waste permit. I mean, I'm not trying to fight the board on this one at all.
The town say.
The town says number seven, no equipment, debris, junk or other material shall be permitted on extraction site except for those directly related to active extraction operations. So basically, if you had come in to us and we could have gone through the conditional use process to see if you could have piled asphalt and then grinded on site, but.
How would I even know that that's not a, I mean, to me debris is.
Well, because it's not on this form right here, basically. That's how. If it's not on here, you're not supposed to be doing it. So, I mean, I.
It's right here.
Well, I think that. I think that we should figure out, you know, I think you should tell us how long you need to get rid of that asphalt, to truck it out or whatever you're gonna do with it, get it out of the pit. And so that we can put that, I can put that in my motion. You know, so that it's easier for you to conform as a, you know, I don't want to say you gotta do it by tomorrow. And then, I'll make a motion and the, and the board will vote on it.
So I guess if this went to the next level and we argued that that is a legal, it's inert fill, it's legal, I'm not breaking the law.
No, I didn't say that.
So you can tell me if I broke the law next door? He wants it to be a condition, not, though he's saying, he's not, he's not going against it being an inert fill, but he wants it to be a condition. Well, it's easy, just add it as a condition as part of a recycling facility. Asphalt and stumps are recyclable.
Right, well.
I mean, I'm trying to say, if you guys use, look at all the sand on the roads. You're all worried about natural resources. Look how much sand you guys.
Are we gonna be able to talk or are we gonna argue?
It's the same thing though, I mean.
I'm gonna go on for a while.
But if it's in our.
This is what happened.
It's in our performance standards, that's what Gavin's saying, that you can't haul it in, junk.
Yeah, I mean, it says you shouldn't have been hauling in the stumps either, but, but in this case, we're trying to give you a permit for that and kind of look the other way that you brought some in initially because it's a stump and then, I mean, it's and you're allowed to grind stumps on site. It was already something right in the document. I mean.
Well, in my initial application, I asked to go deeper too, so why don't we just add asphalt and replace, because you guys asked me to remove to go deeper.
We're not gonna add asphalt because.
Because you don't want to.
No, it's in our performance standards.
You'd have to come back to us and apply for another conditional use permit to be hauling in asphalt and grinding it, because you're not supposed to be hauling in material. And, and that is something that we're concerned about the groundwater and I feel like.
You feel, but you don't have anything to back that. You have no facts. I did all the homework you asked me to do. I called everybody I could, I got printed you all kinds of reports and you didn't even take time to read it.
Just got it.
I did, just go through this, but like I was saying, I'm not arguing whether it's hazardous or not. I'm saying it's not permitted use and I, I just want to know how much time you need to get rid of it so that I can put that in the motion. And then we can vote on, vote on it, I mean, but, I mean, I can, I can come up with a timeframe of my own, I guess.
So. You want me to haul that pile off?
Yeah, I mean, I don't want you to grind it on site. There's nothing in here, I mean, that's not what, that's not what your operation's about, you know? We're talking about stumps and mineral extraction tonight and, and over the history of this pit too, I mean.
So where do you want me to haul it to?
That's not my problem. I mean, you, you probably have another parcel of land you could take it to, or maybe you could take it, I mean, that's, really, I don't have to worry about that.
So we get, I, so let me ask you, let me get this straight. So I agreed to haul that pile off.
Yeah.
And we can talk about it at a later date? Or am I gonna be subject to this moratorium and have to wait six months?
Well, I mean, honestly, my motion would be that you would haul it off and that you wouldn't be bringing asphalt back in there and then we would vote on that.
Well, that's not fair. That's really not fair to me either. You're not giving people enough time to think about it. I think we should.
We've been, the board has been thinking about it for the last two weeks since we had this conversation, so I feel like they have had enough time to think about it and decide if they feel like asphalt is a material we want in these pits. I mean, you talk about the, you have to put in a fifteen thousand dollar pad to put stumps on and we just have asphalt sitting on the ground. Really, you know, something needs to be done with it and I feel like.
It sits on the ground all over the place.
Not in every gravel pit in Acton, it doesn't.
Well, in every gravel pit not in Acton it does.
Well, that's something, that's something.
I'm fine with agreeing to move the pile as long as you guys are fine with entertaining. I think saying no is not fair.
Well.
I pay a lot of money in taxes in this town too and that is, unless you guys are gonna literally make the sale of reclaim illegal, that's not fair to me either. Can you tell me I can't resell it there? I can't bring it in and resell it?
It's not about that. It's about the use of your pit. It's a use that wasn't applied for in your first go run. That's what it's about.
I agree with you. But what I'm, what my point is, is that it doesn't specifically say in your ordinance that you can't. So who would think that it's not a building material? It is literally defined by the state. The only people that you can use to define it as a building, as gravel, aggregate.
Again, I'm, I'm referring to our ordinance.
All right, I'm gonna make a motion that these piles, these piles of asphalt are removed from the site within the next three months. And that no more asphalt is to be hauled in. As a condition under six point six point three point four G.
I don't know Gavin, if we can preclude him from coming back for, for a conditional use to do that, where we could review it in depth with protections and whatever else that we think might be needed. You know, it's, it's clearly a use that we have not authorized. I'm okay with, because of that, with removing it. I'm not sure we, we should say forevermore now, or at least I'm not comfortable saying forever, no forevermore now.
I don't want to argue too much, but I, if the, on this the SPCC notes, there's six notes about petroleum's being spilled in the pit and then immediately cleaned up. And there's tons of petroleum-based asphalt sitting there and we have number two, any spill of any size shall be viewed as an emergency and cleaned up immediately.
Actually. That's not true. There's not tons, because it's, there's only like three percent petroleum in asphalt. So there, in that whole pile, there might be a couple hundred pounds of fully cured asphalt, which is not the same as hot mix. So I'll agree with you that you don't like it there, because you don't understand it, but to say that I'm polluting the ground, that's, that's throwing it in salt. That's not fair. Because it is, asphalt is a hundred percent recyclable and it's recommended for use around ponds for driveways, because it does not erode. That's fact. If you shouldered H Road with reclaim, there wouldn't be six inch drop falls to have.
All right, well, I don't think we need any more discussion about it this way. I think the board should discuss it and will create a motion. And I think we've had enough discussion back and forth.
I, I do have a question. I mean, not, not about this dialogue, but how is extraction defined? I didn't see it in definitions, but.
Mineral extraction is defined, to look under.
Mineral. Mineral extraction, twenty-nine, top of the page. Does any operation within any twelve month period which removes one or more one hundred yards of soil, topsoil.
Okay, got it, yep.
Sand, gravel, clay, rock, ledge, peat or other similar material from its natural location and to transport the product removed away from the tran, extraction site.
Thank you. And that answers what my question was. So with that definition, I don't believe with your conditional use permit that you can bring in gravel or rocks or anything from another site.
Well, you got two, five nine, five point nine point two. On your ordinance on page fifty-two.
Hopefully I'm in the right book.
The reason that this exemption on page fifty-two exists is to allow people to move soil around if it's less than a thousand cubic yards without coming and getting a conditional use permit for mineral extractive industry. It's not to allow someone who has a permit for mineral extractive industry to bring in under a thousand yards.
Right. So with that in mind, I believe that even with cured asphalt, bringing it in violates the conditional use permit that you had. You could not.
I, I'll agree to disagree, but I'm not agreeing, I'm not disagreeing to not take the pile out. I've listened, I'm fine with it, but I think, I don't think, I agree with him, I don't think it should be forever. I think until I approve to you guys, I think this should stay open. So I can prove to you guys, I think that's fair. You should, I should leave it open for conditions.
By bringing it in, you changed the conditions of.
I don't have a problem taking it out.
Okay, I'm just, let me hear me out. You changed the conditions. That's all we're approaching here. I don't have a problem with the pollution part of it, because I did my research too. And research says there isn't that much pollution from asphalt. I don't have a problem with that. It's the fact that you got a pile, you're bringing stuff in, goes far beyond your conditional use. All we're asking is that if you're gonna do that, like you're asking to bring stumps in.
Which I agree with you, I'm looking at from your point of view.
You never asked us to bring asphalt in. That's what I'm getting to.
And I'm fine, because I didn't understand that.
The condition's gonna be, we're gonna correct that fault in order to give you this one. And then later, if you want to bring in asphalt, you're gonna ask for another condition.
Sure.
Is that not the process?
Sure.
And I'm fine with that.
So all we're doing is correcting the mistake, getting everybody on the same sheet of music, get you what you need. Next time you want to do this, ask for it like you're doing now. And that will go over time and bit. So.
Okay, so I will, I will withdraw my motion and create a new motion.
How much time do you need? Three months is fair.
Yeah, it isn't forever, it's just.
And is it possible that as soon as the pile is gone, we can talk about it?
We can't make that commitment, because if there's a moratorium in effect.
Well, he's in existing pit though.
No, this is. No, this is different.
It would be a new permit.
All right.
But we, honestly, we can't say, because we don't know if the moratorium's gonna pass for one.
But if it does, we may not be able to do it.
Well, wait a minute, does the moratorium apply to essentially recycling program that happens to be on?
It applies to all new permits for mineral extraction.
But he's not mineral, he's not doing.
It's a change of condition to a conditional use for mineral extraction, so wouldn't be a permit.
I'm with you.
So I would say, in order to satisfy G, I make a motion. Or I don't even know if I need to do that at this point, but I might as well. We have an agreement now, right?
This is talking about hazardous materials, so I could say, I would say yes to this. We have an agreement that before we grant.
But as it stands right now, they don't.
I'd like, I'd like a written, all right, I'd like a written condition that the asphalt now on site be removed within the next three months. Period.
As a condition of allowing another.
As a condition of approval.
Yep, I, I agree with that. Yep, I, I agree with that.
Once the asphalt's gone, can we talk about bringing it back?
Yes.
Yes, we can talk about it.
Well, I just wanna be clear. I don't wanna be held to this moratorium. That's what I'm trying to get at cuz I don't have time to add.
You could be held to the moratorium. We don't have the authority, if the moratorium passes, we do not have the authority to say that we're gonna allow anyone to operate outside of it. We don't have that authority.
No, because the.
The moratorium hasn't been passed. It may fail.
We discussed it before the moratorium's in effect though.
Well, we don't have an application in front of us.
So application, $250 tomorrow, pile's gone in less than three months, we talked about it.
No, cuz it has to be, it won't happen Seth. If the moratorium passes, you'll be stuck with the moratorium. Because we're not taking on any, any new conditional use applications until we're, we're caught up with this ordinance stuff and you have to, in order to even have your condition, it has to be substantially completed for it to even make it through, be grandfathered by the moratorium, which you won't have that because it's gonna be a new application. So if, if the moratorium does pass, you will have to wait, just like all other extraction pits, looking for expansion or opening.
Well, it wouldn't matter anyway because the fact is that if he's gonna continue bringing that asphalt in, he'd have.
He's not gonna continue to bring the asphalt in. He's already stated that.
Three months.
We can, let's just move on right now.
Go to H. Do we need a vote on the motion that's on the floor? Did we have a second or we just all in agreement? If we're in agreement?
Do you want a second and we'll vote on that?
I'll second it.
All in favor of?
Motion is that that be a condition? Is that correct?
Yes.
Condition to remove the existing pile within three months.
Three months. All in favor? All opposed? 4-1. Move on to H.
A stormwater drainage system capable of handling a 25-year storm without adverse impact on adjacent properties has been designed. And that's where we talked about the erosion control mix around the edge of the pad.
No, I, I didn't say around the pad. I said I would put it on the low side, the obvious low side. It wouldn't work around the pad cuz you'd never be able to maintain it.
Okay, and, and we did, actually Bernard brought this up before we started reading through the conditions two weeks ago and we did ask about, you know, which, which way the water would be going, like when you. But I guess it doesn't, I mean, it's more of an issue for you that it doesn't get in your, that the wastewater running off that doesn't get in your way. So I'm sure you'll design it so that it won't be in your way if there is any water coming off of it. The pit itself is internally drained, so. I'd say yes unless anybody has any thing else they wanna.
We already have the bomb as a condition anyway from the earlier discussion.
Right, we'll make, we'll wanna make sure we have those conditions spelled out at the end so we know. All right, so, um, so yes, adequate provisions to control soil erosion and sedimentation have been made. Um, and I think this is where we would ask that you seed your piles of loam in the spring as soon as possible. So you get vegetation on your piles of loam. So that would be a.
Uh, do you follow DEP? I mean, if it's an ongoing pile, you only have to seed it if it sits for more than 30 days.
I just remember you had a, quite a few piles to the, next to the stump pile of loam. And none of them had any vegetation growing on them.
Yes, but they're, they're turned over. It's, they're not sitting stagnant for more than 30 days.
Well, it's, it seemed to me like it was an excessively large area to be in active use. Um, and that it, it should be consolidated and, and seeded. And because it's, that soil there is waiting to be re-spread on the pit when you re-vegetate. So it should be seeded in the meantime.
Okay.
Okay, um, so yes, with that condition that the, that the loam is seeded.
By the springtime?
Yeah. Um, there's adequate water supply to meet the demands of the proposed use and for fire protection purposes.
Yeah, that's NA. So we don't use water to extinguish.
Yep, yep.
My opinion.
The provisions of buffer strips and on-site landscaping provide adequate protection to neighboring properties from detrimental features of the development such as noise, glare, fumes, dust, odor, and the like.
So I have a question about owner-operator of that grinder versus a leased condition. If, if later on down the road, the team, the grinding is gonna go on more often because more people are bringing stumps in and you're bringing more stumps in. That would change the twice a year. So that might wanna be a condition.
I thought it was only once a year you were gonna.
Once a year.
According to that.
Have to grind, you have to grind once a year. I think you guys asked me and I said I can't see it ever happening more than twice a year.
Yeah, well, it also says it there on the plan. Supposed to be started spring and fall. There are eight acres open on that, by the way, on that plan and that was done in earlier. Used an old plan.
I don't honestly foresee there ever being possibly enough stumps to give it a to grind more than once or twice a year.
If you're a commercial grinding operation, might be having people come in. I mean, how often do they grind in Sanford?
Simpson has, yeah, but he makes mulch and stuff.
A day, every week?
That's a, I'd say that's a different.
It's a whole, that's a whole different thing. I'm.
I'm just talking about in the future. I mean.
Simpson's making, Simpson's making landscaping mulch for every landscaping company out here in Southern Maine. He's looking to do erosion control mulch.
But noise is a consideration.
The grinders, we looked it up at the last meeting, the motor that runs the grinders is actually quieter than the school bus. I don't, never seen a grinder close to run, but it's 62 Zs.
Very big machine.
Well, so since you say you never see it going beyond once or twice a year, are you agreeable to a condition that it not be more than twice a year?
I can't really agree to that because the state says you have to grind it once a year, no matter what. So I think in all fairness, the easiest way to make this simple is just to say, no grinding, just follow the crusher's.
Certain hours.
Oh, I think that's a mistake.
Well, you, but you can't, you have to hire somebody to come in. You can't just say.
Right now, but I'm just talking about later on because this says nothing about you having somebody come in. The condition says nothing about that.
You're correct.
You could buy a machine, sitting on site, you could grind all day long.
I could if that was my business, but my business is not grinding stumps.
Not right now, but I'm just talking about if, whatever he gets for conditions. I think we have to be very specific.
I'm fine with, if you guys are fine with keeping the same hours that the crusher, which is seven to five and from Memorial Day to Labor Day. It can't happen. I think that's more than fair.
Got a good point. I mean, it could easily blow up into a full-time, everyday operation without any limitations. So the once or twice a year might be a good thing. And if he needs to go further than that, he could come in for another grade to his condition or something like that. But for now, I agree, limitation to once, twice a year, within operating hours, within the standards that he's in right now for crushing. And maybe even a notification that he's bringing the machine in so we can notify the neighbors about it, something. But I agree, there's no limitation to him. I'm not gonna say you're doing that. I'm just putting it out there. If it isn't you standing there, it's somebody else. But the condition is, there is no condition. That's our job.
Well, you know, the other thing is, we, we don't have to, it's great to work collaboratively and reach an agreement on whatever we can, but we don't have to. We can tell you, these are the conditions that we're offering it to you under and if it's not acceptable to you or you don't feel it would be profitable or it restricts envisioned expansion for you, then you don't have to do it.
I was more looking at, you have to do it once a year. You have to be able to schedule the person you're using. That's where I was going with it.
Exactly, but yeah, so you're, but you're saying, I don't ever envision doing it more than once or twice a year. I get it, you have to do it once a year. So if we say, okay, well, we're saying no more than twice a year because of our concerns, that gives you.
I'm fine with it.
Yeah, well, then there we go.
I think he's all right.
If you're gonna only make, my old point was, and I don't think you guys are understanding, is if you're only making it twice a year, it's pretty hard to schedule somebody twice a year when you're not giving me half a year.
No, no, we're giving you twice a year instead of once.
But he only has six months.
But I only have six months to do it. And that's when everybody crushes for grinds. That, that was my point. I was fine with just, you know, if you kept it within the crushing hours and I know, okay, look, I gotta figure it out. But I mean, I'm, I'm fine with twice a year. I just think it's gonna be hard to be able to maintain that in that, the, the Memorial Day, Labor Day thing. That's the only thing I'm saying, be able to still do it.
Okay.
Cuz it really only gives me about a month on either end of the spectrum.
Well, if you grind, how long does it take to grind? I mean, how long do you?
I tried to pick Jeff's brain, but basically he's like, you know, he's, he, I don't, I don't want you, cuz I don't want you to hold it to me, but he's like, if you made a week's worth of grinding, it'd be hard.
I know it depends on size of the pile you got and, you know, how much time it, but normally how much would it, let's say you, you got it piled up for a year and you brought in a grinder.
The, the pile that's there now, they told me, basically it would cost the same amount. That pile was five times the size after bringing everything in.
How long does it take?
Four, it's four days.
Four days? That's, that's what I was looking for, days, weeks. Yeah, we're talking about grinding for weeks on end.
No, it's even four days. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. So I see what you're saying. So yeah, I didn't think about it that way. When you say grinding once or twice a year, that should be, there should be a timeframe.
Yeah, we're, we're saying, okay, we'll give you twice a year.
For two weeks.
Each time you get five days or six days or something.
Well, I think, I think we had already talked about it being a week at a time, wasn't it?
Which would be easy enough to work around the holidays and the restraints we already have were.
So twice a year? Yep.
Twice a year, not on the holidays, like we said, you know.
Not exceeding, not exceeding 14 days of grinding or something, right?
Per session.
Put in that any deviation or expansion has to be approved by a majority of the planning board so that if something we don't foresee comes up, you can come back and ask for a one-time deviation, you know?
Yeah, all of a sudden you get.
This happened, we had too much rain, I couldn't get anyone, whatever. That way we can work with you to allow it but not be creating this ongoing operation by saying as long as it's within the hours, you can do it whenever you want.
Now, actually, if you like, I actually kinda like how Gavin said it. Compliment, I think the 14 days a year was great. That way there's a breakdown and they have to leave realistically for, say, a part's gone in the month, they can come back.
Wonderful. More restrictive and if that's what you want, have at it.
So we got a yes with the condition. We got a yes with a no more than twice a year, 14 days total.
Yep, great.
I would also just point out when the changes are made, the current reclamation notes talk about stump shall be grounded and utilized on site. You're gonna sell it now, so that is gonna have to be deleted. The utilized on site will have to be deleted.
Or any, we'd have to add any stumps produced or, or grown on site shall be utilized on site.
Yeah, but it has to be addressed, I think.
You said, it said shall remain on site? Is that what you just said? I didn't hear.
Right now it says any stump shall be grounded and utilized on site and we wanna change it to say any stumps grown on site shall be, or something like.
Produced on site?
That, that had more to do with this.
From the site.
Cut some more trees down for.
Right, right, right. Okay, so that.
Nothing to do with the resale operation.
So that he doesn't take the stumps from the site, grind them up with all the other ones, sell them out and then not have that material to use. Has it, which you draw on the site. It was kind of the. And in terms of buffer strips, which is kind of where we. Okay. I think we're, yeah, that's, that's kind of what we're talking about, but we got on to the grinding. I think, um, you have a good buffer strip with the road and with the resources. I think your buffers are are good unless anybody.
I agree.
I agree. I mean, I wouldn't mind seeing the old entrance re-vegetated, but I don't think I'm gonna ask for it right now. Okay, I, all performance standards in this ordinance applicable to the proposed use will be met. And that's kind of where we started reading through these performance standards.
You, you've got the insurance, right Seth?
You got insurance?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yes, I do.
I would just like to reference 6.2.4 on page 82.
I do, I do have a question about insurance though. Why do you guys require a $15,000 bond when you could get a much larger dollar amount from an actual bond company? Like when I opened mine, I had to give you guys a check for $15,000.
Right.
When you could have got an surety.
Right.
Way more.
Yep.
So what, you wanna give us more money? Is that what you're saying?
No, I, I tried that with a former code officer and he said the town had been, they didn't, they weren't gonna entertain it, but I don't really, I mean, realistically, what would $15,000 do?
What was it? Because of what? Bond companies come and go?
Yeah, bond, bond, the problem with bonds is.
Gate blast, huh?
They just come and go. It's, they fold and then the new bond company comes up and they might not honor the old bond either.
Wow, maybe like a fly-by-night bond company, but like a accredited bond company? I don't think so.
Well, the, the 15 grand was to help re-vegetate if you bailed on the project.
I agree. I'm just saying, I don't know.
To buy seed, pretty much.
Yeah, I was saying.
Yeah, well, they just, all the loams on site, so the town would hire somebody to spread it and then we would use that money to buy seed.
If you don't think.
I just, I need to be clear. I don't know about anyone else. I have had a very long day. This is not an indefinite evening for me. So we need to either focus on the business and get it done or adjourn and resume another night.
We're very close.
I, I understand that, but if we're gonna get into additional concerns about bonds and sureties, you know, use your time as you wish, but it's not an open-ended invitation, for me anyway.
Pat, you had something on L?
82.
Page 82?
What was?
6.2.4.
6.2.4?
Mm-hmm.
So you're talking about buildings?
No, I can read it if you'd like, it says, no building permit for a building or structure on any lot shall be issued to the owner of record therein, or his or her authorized agent, until the proposed construction or alteration of a building or structure shall comply with all aspects with the provisions of this ordinance, or with a decision rendered by the Board of Appeals or the Planning Board. Any application of such a permit shall be accompanied by a plan accurately drawn to scale showing the actual shape and dimensions of the lot, to be built upon, the exact location and size of all the buildings or structures already on the lot, the location of new buildings to be constructed together with, with the lines within which all buildings and structures are to be constructed. The existed and intended use of each of the structure and such other information as may be necessary to provide for the execution and enforcement of this ordinance. So there's kind of two things, I think, that are jumping out at me. One, that we're not supposed to issue a permit until all other operations are up to snuff, and, and the second one being that this drawing has to be updated to show the size of the pad the stumps are going on, and...
Jeff is on vacation at Civil Consultants, and, but I thought we talked last time, we didn't have to have that until after this?
No, you, you don't need it tonight, it's just, you need to compile all the conditions onto this sheet, and include a visual of what's going on.
Yep.
And I didn't know if Pat, if you had any particular...
That's basically what I was looking at, and also, I think the date of that survey is maybe updated, as to the amount of area that's open, as far as to, is it ten acres? Or is it less than ten acres?
This is ten, right?
It's ten.
Has it been surveyed, because we have to have that...
I had to have that before I could sign on it, and before you guys gave my last condition, like...
I mean, what's open, not the land around, but what's specifically open as it pertains to the notes, the reclamation notes.
Mm-hmm. Well, that is, that is something we talked about on this application, too, is that non-vegetated area of lot, and we discussed whether or not we were gonna ask him to have the thing surveyed to come up with that or not.
Right.
And at the meeting two weeks ago, I said that I wasn't gonna ask him to have it surveyed because I felt like he was under the ten acres allowed. If you feel like it has exceeded the ten acres permitted, then we, we, we have the authority to ask for a survey to be done.
Just to keep clear with the documentation that we have, and to keep everything above board, to make sure that we're making the right decision, based on the information presented in front of us, is that accurate? Because what we have is something that says eight acres is open.
I haven't opened up anything else.
It's not an updated, um, survey.
Yes, well, that, that is something that, when, as this...
The same.
Yeah, no, I, I hear you, that as, and as we're, we are asking for this particular document to be updated, that is something that we could include, and...
If it's not important, and it isn't gonna matter if there's an appeal to this, then I'm all for it.
I feel like that where it would matter is, is that if, if he had exceeded the ten acres, that we would be looking for more revegetation than we are currently asking for.
Right.
Right now, we're not asking for him to reclaim any, and revegetate any of the land because he's within the, we, we are presented with information that tells us that he's within the ten acres permitted. And if, and if we have questioned that, we...
So the, the areas on this, this document is what you have open?
That is all I have started, I, I cut two acres of trees, I have not opened up yet, but I have less than ten acres right now. I had it surveyed in the spring, like you guys asked, had everything flagged off, with, they were yellow and red ribbons, and I only have ten acres cut, like, that's all, the rest is vegetated with trees. I kept the working area in the exact same spot, I mean, mainly because it was easier, it was already there.
Where are the two, well, I guess that's the question, then, where are the two acres? You've shown eight here.
It's right here.
But I haven't got, I guess, my point is, it's right here. And this isn't, I don't think this is, this, this is really like, right, probably here, cause it was, there was a bunch of piles of stumps and stuff here, but it's, we cut right here, two acres.
But you haven't grubbed it out?
No, I haven't grubbed it out.
So stumps are still there?
Still vegetated.
So it's vegetated?
Yeah.
According to our definition, if the stump's in the ground, it's still...
I left the stumps there, because I just wanted to be able to, I didn't wanna have to stop, I wanted to be able to keep going once I got to the pit bottom.
So I guess, just, does anybody else have reasonable concern that he has exceeded the ten acres of open, open meaning, destumped land permitted? And we, we do need some, I mean, we do need some method for measuring these things, you know?
So I was told Sanford uses a drone service that actually GoFlies up and can, and that takes pictures and can calculate the actual open area.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll reach out to Sanford and find out, so for future things like this, I might be in touch with, with the code department over there, and see if I can, they can give me a contact number for this service, because, or I'll just have it act and buy me a drone, and I'll get my pilot's license. The, but no, they, they do, there's a service of a drone company that flies up to take pictures, and it actually can, it will give you the square footage that's actually open.
Yeah, I think that would be a great thing to do for all the pits in the town.
Yeah.
I don't, I mean, I, I don't have any evidence that he's exceeded the ten acres, though, I mean, I, obviously, we'd like, we'd like to see revegetation occurring, and, and the piles of loam stabilized, um... But, I mean, we could, we could, we could vote to, that, that it needs to be measured before we approve it, but I, I feel like, whereas we're really just looking at the stump activity, we're, we shouldn't be pushing too hard in, in that direction right now.
I agree with that.
So are there any other, um, any other performance standards that we're concerned with in the ordinance? I think we've, we've gone over them pretty, pretty well. So I'm gonna say, yes, all performance standards in this ordinance applicable to the proposed use will be met.
I agree.
M archaeological and historic resources as designated in the comprehensive plan will be protected. And I don't think there are any archaeological or historic resources.
Yeah, N A.
Okay, we already had a public hearing. So, and then we have the decision, but we need to, um... Let's list out everything, we need to have a thorough list. Ashley, do you think you have a conglomerated list of all the new conditions that need to be added to this document? And if you just read through what you have, and we'll...
I, I have included conditions that erosion control mix surrounding, surrounds the air, the area of, not the actual landing, but any, you know, I guess, how would we like to define that area?
The pad, is it?
I would define it as semi-permeable. The only, I mean, I didn't really, I went up through my rover today, and I checked the grains. The, in this...
So surrounding natural resource, preventing, preventing any erosion, or preventing any...
It was for the...
See this spot right here?
I think it was to prevent the water from coming off of the pad that was containing the stumps and erosion control mix, cause it's a semi-permeable pad, like, water's gonna run off of it.
It's gonna run off, it's gonna drain off, but you don't want it going into the natural resource.
Well, I was just saying, I went up here with my rover today.
Yeah.
And this spot right here, which I don't know if you guys can see it, it's actually next to the, the old monitoring well. That actually rocks, like, seven feet, like, it, like, the water, like, this goes down, and this is all vegetated now, nothing, we don't, there's nothing here, it's all vegetated. This goes down, and then it goes right back uphill. So it's almost like an retention park, this whole section, it's right across from this.
Yeah.
And it is the lowest spot.
Yeah.
And it, and actually, it doesn't get any puddles now, but I'm just saying, that is, the spot I said that would be a good spot for erosion control, if you were concerned, would be right here. Cause that could, I guess, technically, if we had some sort of a freak rainfall, we got four feet of water, could leave, that's the only spot it could leave, right here.
Uh-huh.
From, from here to here.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, there's, it is pretty internally drained.
That's the front of your proposed reclaim area, is that what you're saying?
I, it's...
No, it's, it's right on the roadside.
Yeah, it's this thing.
Like an absolute...
It's that, I think.
It's probably the size of this road, it just goes right down the pole. I'm guessing it was the old pit, like, long, long, long.
So the next one was asphalt needs to be removed within three months. Grinding, grinding will only happen twice per year, or fourteen days, not within Labor Day or Memorial Day. And I threw in that, when you do the grinding, notify the code enforcement office.
It was a total of fourteen days?
Yeah.
Right, well, it was just, just a total, it wasn't two times or a total?
Well, it shouldn't, it should be between the Memorial and Labor Day, right?
He had that.
Yeah, I had, I had, it should be between, um...
If you wanna put like, if you wanna adhere to normal pit hours.
Yeah, yeah, it would be right, whereas, uh...
It's, uh...
I had it, so I had it the wrong way, so yeah.
The Memorial Day to Labor Day.
Yeah, I had it, I had it. Nice person, yes.
But that's where you could tag it on, is, is under hours of operation on this document.
Yeah.
Crushing, you want the crushing hours of operation.
Yeah, it would be right with that.
On the same time.
Yeah. Crushing is not allowed from Memorial Day to Labor Day, so you could add, add in grinding.
And then, um, then he needs to put on the survey, size and location of the stump pen.
Right, a visual of it.
And that's, that's where we left off on the certain conditions for this right now.
And then, we also had the, oh, sorry.
Did you say the removal of the...
Asphalt within three months.
Yeah.
So we had, um... Review procedure in public hearing, uh, A, where we were discussing the invasive...
Right, yeah, I haven't...
Inversers?
Huh?
Invasive critters.
Well, I, I do have contact Eric Hamlin, D E P, concerning invasive species, I just didn't, I, so that is...
Once we get a, a response, we'll be able to answer that criteria. Right now, it's, that's the only one we haven't answered.
Um, and I'm just curious, should I, not even de, de, well, Eric Hamlin's the solid waste guy, should, I should probably contact Forestry, or, or no?
Eric, it should be, uh...
I think it's a state entomologist.
Eric Cluck.
Eric Cluck is the guy you want, he's the guy that deals with waste. Eric Hamlin's the pit guy.
Oh, he's the pit guy, I thought, uh...
There's gotta be a stadium, uh...
Right, I think you should go...
I have it, I have it all down on my desk, anyway.
You should go more with an insect specialist than a, um, material specialist. That, that's why we were thinking state entomologist.
There we go.
Or someone equivalent stature in entomology.
Probably, be through the state, or you, you...
Pat just deals with the, he deals with like, the logging aspect, anything that has to do with waste.
Yeah, well, try that, yeah.
So this one is Eric Cluck, or Eric Hamlin?
Yeah, I was trying to look it up, and, I'm pretty sure it's Eric Cluck.
I think Eric Cluck is, um, mining, mining and extraction pits, and Eric Hamlin is solid waste.
Hmm?
Say that, can you say that?
The worst guess is...
I said you might be right.
I, I make a motion that we contact an entomologist as well.
So you'll, you're actually...
Do you want a second? Hold on.
Eric Cluck is the mine guy.
No, I said that, Eric Cluck is the mine guy, Hamlin's the...
You need to contact the bug guy.
No, I didn't say that.
Eric Cluck is mine.
The only one I talked to is Hamlin, and he's the solid waste guy.
All in favor?
All in favor of contacting entomologists.
Contact the bug guy, get the answer.
Entomologist.
That's on my table, my plate. State entomologist.
I think so.
Maybe it's through the state, I'm sure UMO has one, too, you can call.
What's that, Chris?
You don't only have one.
That's true, yeah, or USM.
What were the papers that you gave us last week?
Uh, those, those came from me and Fish and Wildlife. You can actually call that guy, or I could call him tomorrow. But entomologist is different than a biologist.
Wait, I know.
Yes.
But I feel like, um, we want the most, it's, it's kind of a...
I'll call around, I'll call around, I'll call around to multiple people, and they'll keep on giving me the lead that I need to get to.
I'll call this guy tomorrow, too, that I contacted before.
Infectious folks.
Okay, um, so once we get that, we'll be able to finish this, and we'll get this form with all the new conditions listed on it, and, um, it's likely we'll be able to vote at the next meeting, I would think, but it...
Unless he always got this...
Will be the twentieth.
A regular meeting.
Yeah, yeah, because the next meeting is just a hearing, and it's a special meeting just for the hearing.
Right.
And the proposed zoning changes if we get to them.
Right.
I think that's gonna be a long public hearing.
Yeah, it could be.
Do you need that before the next meeting, the paper?
Yeah, it'd be great if you got it to Jason before the twentieth, so that he could review it.
Yeah, that's what, that's what I was telling you, it's like...
The guy's on vacation.
Seventeenth.
Always got three days to get some work.
Well, I mean, that's...
Right.
Well, I mean, we can schedule you for February fourth, I think.
Third.
Third, whether it was the first Thursday in February. And that'll give us enough time to do what, do what we need to do, and...
And your guy can draw up his thing, if you're comfortable with that.
Well, he's already got the map, it's probably just gonna, just, he's just gonna be changing some conditions and stuff like that.
He's gotta, he's gotta put the pad on the map.
Oh, correct.
Right.
Should take him all five minutes, but...
And then, he's actually building me a model, uh, I'll be able to measure, I can keep the pit measured the whole time. I got you set up where I want to stop, and then the machines actually physically won't go any further from the pit entry.
So, February third, you gonna come back?
Yeah.
And if, yeah, and at that time, we should be able to vote on it, if we have everything in order, which it seems like we're on track to do.
I think we're there, unless the bug guy says, you know, there's some, something you gotta do, it might be another condition, but I, I think we're... It might be another condition, but I, I think we're.
Yeah, they don't treat these things with any kind of.
I don't think they're reasonable. Right.
Well, I was just curious, like, before they make the erosion control, they don't, they don't treat this.
That's what I'm saying, I don't.
Yeah, I'm just curious, I'm asking questions that I don't really know the answer to.
It's like splitting wood, you split, split wood.
No, I don't think it's something that they really look at. He doesn't, he doesn't.
That's the thing, he's just grinding, whatever, people.
You do, because you're hauling them in.
Yeah, I do, but I don't know where somebody else could be getting them.
But it's about you, not Simpson, right?
I, I agree, but I honestly wouldn't know what an ash dump looks like over there.
Well, start studying your bugs.
We're gonna go for a walk.
On that note, I move that we adjourn. Hold on, I just wanna remind everybody about the site walk on Saturday. It's fifty-five Red Gate Lane or the Heberts, and then, and that's at ten AM.
Weather permitted?
Uh, it's gonna be fine.
I think it's snowing just tomorrow, I think.
Yeah, it's gonna stop till eight o'clock.
No, it's, it's supposed to be ten degrees and windy, so bring your hat.
Yeah, long jackets or warm jackets.
Yeah, yeah, but it shouldn't be that long a site walk, I don't think.
No, it's not a big area.
Though I did notice that it says winterization services.
Right.
Now, on this conditional use, which.
Now, we, we talked about that and he was willing to just be storage.
Yeah, so we, we need to get rid of that because we're, we're dealing, and we need to figure out how we're gonna qualify this thing as, as not a boatyard. Because it's, you know, like, what, what do we call it?
See. Are we gonna, um, yeah.
Nice, thank you.
Thank you, Seth.
But the boatyard was allowed in, well.
Not in the rural district, not in the rural zone.
So the thing is, okay, I guess it'd have to be shoreline then, because it's allowed in the Aquaport district.
Well, the.
We heard about that house after that.
So you like us this much, you just wanna keep us going.
Okay, I make a motion to adjourn. Okay, all in favor? Okay. That frees up anyone who wants to.
Uh, John Q. Sec is in.